I will reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Mr. Riffel, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
All right, moving on to our agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda to include item 3.04, Approval of Appointment of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
We now have item 3.04 added. And Mrs. Donner.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the following resolution. Whereas there is a vacancy in the office of the division superintendent, and whereas the school board wishes to appoint Dr. Daniel Kiefer as division superintendent for a term commencing June 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2028. Now therefore be it resolved that Dr. Daniel Kiefer is appointed division superintendent for a term commencing June 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2028, and be it further resolved that the chairperson and clerk are authorized to execute an employment agreement with Dr. Kiefer for a term commencing June 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2028, a copy of which is attached.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Congratulations, Dr. Kiefer. I'll just say briefly, we are extremely excited that we get to present Dr. Kiefer as our next superintendent. It was truly a nationwide search. We interviewed a lot of people, and it was not a foregone conclusion. Less than anyone thinks that that was just always the plan. It was not. We put a lot of time and thought and effort, and there were many rounds, and Dr. Kiefer emerged at the top every time. And so, we're extremely excited to see what you are going to be able to do once you are fully allowed to be the official superintendent.
I've got three more weeks then, because it doesn't start till June 1st. I'm kidding. Madam Chair, may I have just a moment of privilege? Thank you. I am incredibly humbled and honored by the trust and confidence that you have placed in me in selecting me as the next superintendent for the school division. It is with a deep sense of gratitude that I look forward to working with each of you and our stakeholders as we push forward our students towards academic excellence, as we continue to work with our staff on relationship building, and we place just the preeminence on student success. This is an incredibly special community, rich in history, guided by a shared vision, and focused on ensuring that every student is known, supported, and inspired to reach their full potential. In the weeks and months ahead, I look forward to listening and learning, continuing to visit our schools, hearing from students and staff, and building relationships across the community. I fervently believe that together, we will celebrate what's working well, engage in honest dialogue about our challenges, and then move forward with clarity, purpose, and unity. I'm humbled, and I'm really excited. Thank you so much. May I also do the superintendent's report now?
You may now, yeah.
Terrific. The week of April 21 was an incredibly impactful week for celebrating student transitions within our school division. Our kindergarten registration family fest took place at War Hill High School. We had food trucks, raffles, face painting games, activities, and it gave our families an opportunity to register their young people for school. Last year, excuse me, this year, we had over 800 attendees, whereas last year, we were in the 500 range, and we've seen that event continue to grow. Last year, 94 or so folks began the registration process online. This year, over 100, 118. In addition to that event that week, we had Level Up Days, which I think we were really excited about as an organization, whereby all of our current 5th graders had an opportunity to spend time in their corresponding middle school. And all of our 8th grade students had a chance to spend time in their corresponding high school. There were welcome presentations, building tours, and then panels with current students. How about we take a look at this video to learn a little bit more about the day and what transpired?
Level Up Day is basically giving middle school students the opportunity to get a little early in meeting the teachers, knowing the school, meeting other people, seeing what the vibe is like here.
So we wanted to make sure all the 8th graders felt welcome, and they got a full experience of what it's like to be a high schooler.
Hear them for what the next four years have taught for them, and make sure they feel comfortable coming into high school in the fall.
It was really cool and just exciting to see all the 5th graders here. They, some of them walked in with like little nervous faces, but also some of them were jumping up and down.
Today, they're going to be sitting in the auditorium, learning about the fall sports that are coming up, the student leadership opportunities, like NICE Leaders, which comes a little later, and then Student Council, everything of the sort, and then...
Yeah, so we're going to give them a tour after they get their presentation. They're going to go around the first level of the school. We're just going to show them where some of the hallways are, the gym, nurse's office, all that important stuff, just that they feel a little bit more comfortable when they get here in the fall. And just, you know, just to make sure that they're all good to go, just to show them that it's not scary as it may seem.
The experience for today, I thought it was really fun. I had a really fun time talking to all the seniors.
5th graders coming to this game makes you...
Yeah, I thought it was a really good opportunity, and I'm kind of jealous of that.
Yeah, I need to say, right.
As important as learning all the things you can do, is learning about the environment. You have to get a feel for what you're going to be doing.
Like spending time with all the students and learning a lot about Williamsburg before I come here.
I'm excited for making new friends and kind of just rotating around the school and like switching from class to class.
One piece of advice I would tell my freshman self is don't try to blend in with nobody. Being yourself is so much better, and it's so much more fun here.
But for sure, tell myself just to be, you know, confident and make sure I get involved in as much as possible, because really, high school seems scary, but the more you get involved in, the more like friendships you make, and the better experiences you'll have for the rest of your life.
Well, I would just tell myself, get a deep breath, and just know that nobody wants you to fail.
I just feel stressed about it. It's not as scary as it seems, and it's not that different from what they already know.
Level Up Day is giving people that ease of mind of how their life is going to be, because especially me, I had a lot of anxiety coming into a high school, because it's a really bigger school. New people, very, seniors are very intimidating, but Level Up Day kind of shows them, you ain't got nothing to worry about.
We had a blast those two days, and really look forward to continuing to build that programmatic option for all of our students. Finally, the week of the 21st, we ended the week celebrating our exceptional games, where we were able to bring students and staff together from across the divisions. All of our schools were represented, and it was a celebration of students' abilities engaging in adaptive field day experiences. The weather was terrific, and the smiles and activities were even better. Finally, I want to conclude my remarks today around Teacher Appreciation Week, and offer my heartfelt gratitude to all of our teachers. They are consistently, day in and day out, nurturing our students and serving our community. So I know the board joins me, senior administrators join me, and thanking our teachers and wishing them a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. I believe we have some reports from board members. So I'm going to, Mr. Riffel?
Super, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm getting the student advisory, sorry, student advisory committee report. It was the end of the year. We did miss one of our meetings throughout the year, but we did a review of our time on the committee, and our, I guess the two kind of thresholds we talked about was our impact of students, and then like what's next for our students. So our students gave feedback talking about how communication this year has been a lot better between staff and students, and students between each other. And then I hope the staff feel that all that stuff's come from staff to staff as well. So I think you can kind of see from even the Level Up type of things, like our students are engaging a lot more with each other. They also could deal with, we mentioned, I thought about the cell phones not being around, probably also add to that as well. And then students also felt as if their schools are more unified this year, which they felt through the communication and the different activities they do. And then they talk about what's next, and some students talked about how like communication can be further, further kind of brought to their schools, like Lafayette needing their own house system, or grade consistency. We talked about some stuff like that throughout the year, where we actually polled our committee on the grading, how grading happens in our division, and it's kind of gone to Ms. Mompoint and Dr. Ollie's research and study, mostly Ms. Mompoint's work in that. So, and that's cool. And we've said, our seniors who are on the committee who are graduating in a couple of weeks, which is crazy to think about. And then that was that. So we have, I'm sure we have some stuff about moving into kind of what the students' roles are as the board moves in the future, and how that committee can evolve and things like that. But our students are engaged, and they want us to, you know, hear them and work with them. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Mr. Hoseng?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had two New Horizons meetings the past couple of weeks. First one, we had a strategic planning focus group for the Board of Trustees. We're looking at long-range planning for New Horizons coming up, planning for our future. We had a firm come in and speak with the students, with parents, with instructors, with the Board of Trustees, just getting comments, figuring out where we think the New Horizon should be going, and what would like to go in the next couple of years. So they're taking all of those, that information back. They're going to come back to us with a sort of a report later on, and then we're going to try and narrow our focus moving forward. Some of the focus that we had was getting a word out to more individuals, not just necessarily students, but hopefully teachers, parents, even businesses. There are a lot of businesses that don't know what New Horizons can do for them. So we're trying to get the word out to all of them and get their input also on what they need the students or their future employees to be able to do. We had a discussion on increasing the number of students in certain areas. We had a discussion also on advocating for those who would benefit from the classes, who don't, may, or may not necessarily initially qualify for New Horizons. So we discussed how we might be able to help those students and have a process with that. And then the second meeting that we had was just a disciplinary hearing regarding one of the students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Any other reports from board members? Okay, and we will move on to our proposed agenda items. Item 5.01, Review Adoption Recommendation for Math.
Yes, Algebra II and Algebra II Trigonometry Textbooks and Instructional Materials. Thank you, Madam Chair, as we get to that presentation. Excellent. Ms. Mompoint is here to talk us through the process whereby we're recommending some information for your review this evening. Courtney, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kiefer. Tonight, I will provide you with an overview of the Algebra II and Algebra II with Trigonometry, textbook and textbook materials adoption process, and provide a recommendation from the adoption committee for the acquisition of instructional materials for secondary math. Adoption of instructional materials for Algebra II and Algebra II with Trigonometry aligns with key priority, academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity in the strategic plan Elevate 28. Having instructional materials that support 21st century learning and Virginia's profile of a graduate ensures that students and teachers have the appropriate resources aligned with the WJCC curriculum. It is also included in our goal to have high-quality instructional materials to support equitable access to instruction and resources that promote the success of all students. On August 31st, 2023, the Virginia Board of Education approved the revised math standards of learning. The content of the mathematics standards supports the following five goals for students: becoming mathematical problem solvers, communicating mathematically, reasoning mathematically, making mathematical connections, and using mathematical representations to model and interpret practical situations. The Virginia Department of Education's new mathematics standards were implemented at the start of the 24-25 school year. New Algebra II and Algebra II Trigonometry textbooks will align with the 2023 VDOE math standards, which emphasize increased rigor and focus on the five mathematical process goals. The VDOE has directed school divisions across the state to provide high-quality instructional materials that meet the standard's complexity expectations and support meaningful, engaging learning experiences for all students. To ensure our teachers and students are well-supported, it is essential that we adopt updated textbooks and align instructional resources that reflect the expectations of the revised standards. The initial adoption process timeline for Algebra II and Algebra II Trigonometry was submitted to the school board on September 19th, 2023. Due to delays with the state's textbook approval process, our timeline shifted twice. On April 25th, 2024, Algebra II textbooks were submitted for review by the Virginia Department of Education and approved by the Board of Education. The two publishers that we put forward for the committee to evaluate are both VDOE-approved textbooks. Both publishers provided us with copies of their books and access to their digital platforms and electronic versions of their textbooks. Copies of the books were made available to the public to view at the school board office for eight weeks and at an evening adoption fair held at Central Office in Room 309 on March 26th. Each high school had access to hard copies of the textbooks and materials, as well as online access from both publishers. The community was also provided access to the digital platforms and electronic textbooks through the division website for eight weeks. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders was created per school board policy, IIAAR, to review the textbooks and other materials provided by each publisher. I'm appreciative of all the work of the 14 committee members and their colleagues. The committee was comprised of individuals representing the school board, division staff, secondary administrators, nine through 12 classroom teachers, special education, gifted and leap teachers, and parents. Interest in committee membership was collected through administrator and coordinator recommendations and the Engage With Us process. In addition, I'd like to thank Mrs. Amy Chen for serving on the committee as our school board representative. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and instructional materials considering criteria chosen under the far, the four larger categories which are found in IIAAR, as well as the VDOE's textbook quality assurance criteria for textbook approval process. The four criteria categories are content, such as graphics, organization, representation, and alignment to standards; resources, do the teacher's manual and supplementary material support remediation or extension of learning; services, what is the format, access, and duration of professional learning provided by the vendor to support implementation of textbook and related resources; and cost, how does the cost of the textbook align with the allocated budget? Evaluation responses were collected using Microsoft Forms from February 28th through April 16th, 2025. Respondents were not required to evaluate a criteria if they did not feel qualified to do so. The committee met on April 17th to review the evaluation data and discuss their thoughts on the books. The data allowed the committee to compare the two publishers' textbooks and materials. The discussion then centered on the organization of the content, accessibility, and readability, and the digital platform features. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each book, and based on this discussion, made a final decision. The committee voted to select Math Space Virginia Algebra II for 2023 SOLs. The purchase will provide print and digital materials and resources for all Algebra II and Algebra II Trigonometry students and teachers for seven years, including professional learning support and resources. The committee offered these comments as their rationale for selecting this text, highlighting its alignment with our instructional goals, its ability to support both educators and students effectively, and its robust digital platform. Alignment with the instructional goals to include many opportunities for differentiating for various levels. Direct alignment with our new 2023 math standards for Algebra II and Algebra II Trig with Trigonometry. Promotes a higher level of rigor and supports deeper understanding for all groups. Also, support for educators, including new teachers and students with pre-made lessons for varied levels. Lesson suggestions and activities which embody the five math processing goals. Step-by-step math examples. Adaptable and printable practice opportunities for students with AI support. And finally, a robust digital platform that includes easy-to-use and navigation support. AI support for students as they practice skills through the platform with step-by-step feedback. A digital base, I'm sorry, a digital dashboard for monitoring students' practice, time, and performance, and built-in translation features. We have initiated early planning for the rollout of a new textbook set to begin immediately after the school board's decision later this month. To ensure teachers receive consistent support for weekly collaboration planning and coaching during the 2025-26 school year, we will revise all Algebra II unit plans to include textbook alignment over the summer. Additionally, we will provide professional learning opportunities for all Algebra II teachers during Preservis Week and throughout the 2025-26 school year. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to our 14 committee members for their dedication and their generous time devoted to this process. I'm especially grateful for the exceptional leadership of our secondary math coordinator, Ms. Rebecca Cofrin, who's here this evening, and our secondary math coach, Dr. Heather Holcomb. Their thoughtful planning and execution ensured a seamless, engaging, and impactful textbook adoption process. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mompoint. Are there any questions from the board?
Just say really quickly that I also want to thank all the committee members. It was an honor and a privilege to serve on this committee. I, of course, have said it many times, I love all things math and all things having to do with teachers, so this was absolute joy to spend so much time with our wonderful teachers, our math coordinator, our coach. And also, shout out to the parent, and we had a grandparent as well. And I think their perspective really added to the discussion. So if there are any parents or grandparents out there, this is a much-needed, your perspective is very much needed on these committees so that we can make the best choices for our students when it comes to their learning and growth. And then one more just personal thing, my daughter, along with many of her friends, will be taking Algebra II Trigonometry next year as they start high school, as they level up. So this comes, this is very, very much appreciated. And so I just want to say a huge thank you for everybody who helped make this happen. And I'm looking forward to sort of hearing feedback, of course, on the pros and the cons as this is implemented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. I think that's helpful to hear, your perspective as a board member on a committee. So thank you. I think we're all set. Were there any other questions?
Ms. Mompoint will now talk us through textbook process for AP Environmental Science.
Good evening again to all. I will now provide you with an overview of the AP Environmental Science textbook and textbook materials adoption process, and provide a recommendation from the adoption committee for the acquisition of instructional materials for Advanced Placement Environmental Science. The adoption of instructional materials for AP Environmental Science aligns with key priority, academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity in the strategic plan Elevate 28. Having instructional materials that support 21st century learning and Virginia's profile of a graduate ensures that students and teachers have the appropriate resources aligned with the WJCC curriculum and AP College Board curriculum. It is also included in our goal to have high-quality instructional materials to support equitable access to instruction and resources that promote the success of all students. We're requesting the purchase of new Advanced Placement Environmental Science textbooks for three key reasons. First, we want to enhance student engagement and success by providing instructional materials that include robust digital supports and align with current AP exam expectations. Second, with growing enrollment in AP Environmental Science, it's important that all students have equitable access to high-quality, relevant materials that support rigorous learning. Finally, the updated resources will expand, I'm sorry, offer expanded tools for teachers, such as integrated assessments, digital platforms, and planning supports that will strengthen instruction and help students thrive. All textbook resources under consideration are on the College Board list of approved resources for AP Environmental Science. All publishers provided us with copies of their books and access to the digital platforms and electronic versions of their textbooks. Copies of the books were made available for the public to view at the school board office for seven weeks and at an evening adoption fair held at Central Office in Room 305 on March 26th. Each school had access to hard copies of the textbooks and materials, as well as online access from both publishers. The community was also provided access to the digital platforms and electronic textbooks through the division website for seven weeks. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders was created per school board policy, IIAAR, to review the textbooks and other materials provided by each publisher. I'm appreciative of all the work of the committee members. The committee was comprised of individuals representing the school board, division staff, secondary administrator, advanced placement classroom teachers, special education... Special education gifted and leap teachers and a parent. Interest in committee membership was collected through administrator and coordinator recommendations and the engage with us process. In addition, I'd like to thank Dr. Daniel Cavassos for serving on the committee as our school board representative. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and instructional materials considering criteria chose, chosen under the four larger categories which are found in IIAAR. As well as the VDOE's textbook quality assurance criteria for textbook approval process. The four criteria categories are content. Resources, do the teachers manual and supplementary material support remediation or extension of learning. Services, what is the format, access and duration of professional learning provided by the vendor to support implementation of textbook and related resources? And cost, how does the cost of the textbook align with the allocated budget? Evaluation responses were collected using Microsoft forms from February seventeen through April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Respondents were not required to evaluate a criteria if they did not feel qualified to do so. Committee met on April sixteenth. To review the evaluation data and discuss their thoughts on the books. The data allowed the committee to compare the three publishers textbooks and materials. The discussion then centered on the organization of the content, accessibility and readability and the digital platform features. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each book and based on this decision made a final selection. The committee voted to select Bedford Freeman and Worth Environmental Science for AP course. The purchase will provide print and digital materials and resources for all advanced placement environmental science students and teachers for seven years. Including professional learning support and resources. The committee offered these comments as the rationale for selecting this text highlighting its alignment with our instructional goals. Ability to support both educators and students effectively and its robust digital platform. It has, it has superior curriculum alignment. This textbook allows the precise organization and sequencing of the AP course and exam description. Making it seamlessly compatible with the instructional flow recommended by the College Board. As far as instructional design and quality, the resource features clear titles, effective subheadings and appropriate cross referencing that facilitates easy navigation. As far as Canvas integration, which is a critical feature of the BFW resource, it is, it has complete compatibility. As far as user experience, the online interface offers intuitive navigation with clearly labeled and uncluttered content organization. And as far as exam preparation, each unit concludes with comprehensive practice exams specifically designed to mirror the format and rigor of the actual AP Environmental Science exam. There might, the Environmental Science for AP textbook resource represents the optimal, optimal choice for our AP Environmental Science program. Offering comprehensive curriculum coverage, superior instructional design, seamless technology integration. Excellent user experience and thorough exam, thorough exam preparation. This election will provide our teachers and students with the tools they need for success in this challenging and important course. We have begun preliminary planning for the implementation of the new textbook immediately following the school, school board's approval late this month. While we await the delivery of our material, of our materials, we will begin critical professional learning for our three advanced placement environmental science teachers. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to our twelve committee members for their dedication and the generous time they devoted to this process. I'm especially grateful for the exceptional leadership of our division science coordinator Jessica Gato, who's at a conference right now, so cannot attend. But her thoughtful planning and execution ensured a seamless, engaging and impactful, impactful textbook adoption process. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Madam, um, is it, is it reasonable to say that most of the students will be using a digital platform for their instruction rather than a textbook?
I would probably say most, um, and so, um, that's why we're, we are purchasing classroom sets, but all students will have access to the digital platform.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hossein?
Do you know when the current textbooks were purchased? How old they are?
Oh, I actually do have that information. It was quite some time ago. Um, I'd probably have to get that exact date to you, uh, but they're definitely outdated.
All right.
Yep.
We'll get that to you, Mr. Hossein.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monpoint.
You're welcome.
All right, um. We will move on to review the school calendar, five point zero three, review revisions to the school calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening we're bringing forward a recommendation to make. Two slight modifications to the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar at the elementary level. And Ms. Ford is going to walk us through the rationale for those modifications. Welcome, Robin.
Good evening. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kiefer. This afternoon I am presenting a pre, recommendation to revise the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. In response to the significant professional learning and training that will be required of our elementary teachers next school year. This calendar recommendation directly supports the key priority of WJCC's strategic plan Elevate to twenty-eight. Academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity. And the supporting priority, human capital and positive culture. As you recall, you approved a similar request for an elementary school calendar modification last spring. To provide teachers time for the professional learning required to meet the changes in teaching and learning that have been implemented this year. As we have gathered feedback from employee groups throughout the year. Administrators and staff have noted the benefits of this year's elementary professional learning plan. Including protected time dedicated to professional learning responsibilities. Building knowledge over time, having content presented in manageable components. With time to practice and reflect before additional learning takes place. And time to collaborate with colleagues and specialists. In the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, our elementary teachers will need time and support for professional learning focused on three content areas. Teachers will learn about the components and design of the Kidham math curriculum to plan and deliver effective instruction. With the high quality instructional materials you approved at the April fifteenth meeting. Professional learning will begin this summer at Camp GPS and extend through the year with grade level specific PD sessions provided. During the collaboration, planning and learning days, RCLP days. Weekly support of the math specialist during collaborative instructional planning and through coaching. Next year will be the second year of the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. The Benchmark Advanced Curriculum provides an extensive number of components to support teaching and learning. This year, our reading specialists and teachers have been focused on learning to use the materials to implement core lessons. Next year, we will extend our focus to the benchmark assessment and differentiation tools. Additionally, the use of the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System Assessment, known as vowels. And student reading plans will extend to fourth and fifth grade as directed by the legislation. And by the close of this school year, the Virginia Department of Education will have released instructional guides that will support teachers. To fully implement the new history and social science standards of learning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This afternoon, we recommend revising the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar to change two days. Friday, September nineteenth and Monday, December eighth to elementary student holidays and CLP days for their teachers. These dates have been selected to allow teachers to have spaced professional learning experiences in the first semester. That support a strong start for the Kidham implementation. If this calendar change is approved, we will meet the nine hundred ninety instructional hours required by the standards of quality. And WJCC policy IC school year. Thank you for the opportunity to share this recommendation this afternoon. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have as you prepare to vote at the May twentieth meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Are there any questions? Were there, um, is there a particular rationale for those specific days?
We were looking for dates that could occur within the first semester. Though we want to provide the spaced professional learning opportunities for our teachers. We don't want to distribute them into the second semester. We want to try to front load and therefore have the impact for students sooner rather than later.
I think also that there are, there are designated currently in the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, other CLP days that go pre-K through twelve. For instance, October third is one of those days. And then at the elementary level, of course, November three and four are generally reserved for family conferences. So I think as we were thinking about appropriate spacing and, and how to get it done in the first semester. These two really surfaces the best choices. The other piece that I feel like we learned this year as, as we went through and added days in around the literacy scenario was that. There is a desire not to have them on the same day of the week because that impacts some of our centers scenario for students. And we tried to, to spread that out as well. So we, we tried to look at a multitude of options. And, and these two days feel like the, the best case solution for everybody involved.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to, um, request for proposal for solar power purchase agreement.
Madam Chair, the, the board over the course of the last several years has indicated, expressed an interest in looking at. Adding solar power for the school division. We were pretty close, probably eighteen months or two years ago to, to moving in that direction. Uh, I think then upon further consideration, it became important for us to go through a competitive procurement process. Mr. Snipes will talk us through where we are in that process and lay the groundwork for when we come back to the board, probably later this summer.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members. And Dr. Kiefer, tonight's proposed agenda item supports Elevate twenty-eight. Key priority of organization, efficiency and effectiveness. And is being brought for your consideration is the review of request for proposal two zero two five zero nine two seven. WJCC requests proposals from qualified firms, partnerships, corporations, associations and professional organizations. To provide a turnkey solar, photo, solar photovoltaics services through a power purchase agreement. An RFP was issued on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five with the due date of today, May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Notice of that RFP was posted on the James City County Bulletin Board, emailed to contractors and placed on the James City County website. At the current time, there is no cost to WJCC for installation and maintenance of the solar panels and system. The only cost to WJCC is the cost of purchasing the energy produced by the solar system. That installation, um, at the respective buildings and facilities. No longer the acting superintendent, but the superintendent recommends that the board review. The project information and be prepared to award a contract once the determination has been made on the successful respondent. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Looks like Mr. Riffle has one.
Um, the other question I have is, is there any like thing we're asking the, I guess the partner we're gonna choose, like some of the groups. From conferences we've attended or just things I've heard from work, like some of them like the turnkey like means like they'll also maintain the roof the whole time, like. Thirty-year contractor, something, there's just things that we add in our requirements.
When, when, when we mentioned turnkey, we mentioned they will be installing and maintaining the solar panels on the roof. We have a roof replacement plan and a capital improvement plan that we are asking them to, um, match in parallel. To determine when, uh, solar voltages can be placed on the roofs. So when I say turnkey, it's just the installation and maintenance of those.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
So as a follow-up on that, does that mean we would only do, start installing solar panels on roofs that have been recently replaced?
No, um, there are also, we also have, um, requesting that proposal for, um, any of their ideas about how to do installation before roofs are replaced. There are some technologies out there that will allow them to do so and will not interfere when we do replace the roof, so. Have heard about those, so we've asked them to look at that and that's what the request for proposal is about, is again, it came in today. We haven't had a chance to review them yet. But as soon as we do, we will be bringing them back to the board. We don't expect that to be in the next thirty days because it's a, it takes a, some in-depth, um, study on those. I mean, we believe we're gonna have multiple vendors who want to cure the, for services for us.
Okay, thank you. Glad it's, glad it's moving along.
We are too. We think it's a, a really important feature for, uh, the environment, for saving money as an organization. And there are also some teaching and learning aspects that, that we hope to be able to take advantage of.
What, um, real quick, what is the estimated cost saving? I know we had to transfer funds just a little while ago because of utility costs, right?
Right, we, I think we did that at our last meeting. We, we transferred some costs. The, I think part of the scoring process might be related to what different vendors feel like they may be able to help us with in terms of cost savings. So I wouldn't want to opine on that today, but as we come forward with a full proposal. I would expect us to be able to articulate and validate what the savings may look like over the course of the contract.
Makes sense. Any other questions?
Oh, I'm going to so, um, are we adding any additional like battery storage devices on a part of this project? I know some solar groups in the building is not using energy. It can also power a battery that can be used to kind of off, off-grid. Um, during high volume times.
Again, with those proposals, we're asking them to bring those things, so they may, some vendors may have that option for us and we'll look at those and review how that benefits us.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Okay, I think we're all set. Uh, item five point zero five, review purchase request for one school bus.
Mr. Snipes?
Yes, uh, tonight's second agenda item is the review of the purchase request for one school bus replacement from Sunny Merriman Incorporated. Understate contract number E one nine four seven three three two one. MA two zero five eight in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The transportation of the shipment again is replacing one fifty-three passenger special needs bus that was removed from service earlier this year. The total cost for the bus, uh, of one fifty-three eight thirty-nine. Of which received fifty-five thousand five hundred and thirty from the insurance company to, for the bus replacement. And an additional ninety-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars will be transferred from the fuel budget to complete the purchase. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote at the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Any questions? Um, so this is a special needs bus, so that's, we can't use, I mean, we have some buses that, um, aren't being utilized on a daily basis, but those wouldn't work for this, right?
We have buses, right, there are buses that we are using on a daily basis. Some are fifty-three passengers, some are seventy-seven passengers. But the special needs buses are used specifically because they have space where we can put wheelchairs and other, and, and, um, um, equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Um, item five point zero six, review request for storm drain repairs at JBB, James River, Jamestown and Lafayette.
Yes, um, our third agenda tonight is the review of requests for storm drains repairs at, uh, the four schools, JB Blaine Blatton, James River, Jamestown and Lafayette. A review of the storm water system and infrastructure that serves the WJCC schools indicated. A need for extensive rehabilitation of the pipe systems at four schools. That review was conducted by our Storm Water Resource and Protection, uh, Department at James City County Services. And they recommended that we began replacing these storm drains. Once they recommended that, we started to repl, put that, uh, the cost for replacing storm drains in the, uh, capital improvement pa, plan. Of which three hundred thousand is included from FY twenty-five. And an amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen thousand is remaining for, from FY twenty-four. Which brings the available funds to start, uh, repairing these storm drains at five hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. The superintendent recommends the board review the requests for storm drains repairs at the aforementioned four schools and be prepared to vote at the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
All right, any questions?
Do you have an estimate as to what the total cost would be?
We, we have some estimates that the county has provided. We recently have gone out to CCTV all of the drains that, the first four that they recommended. It totals more than the, the estimated budget actually right now totals more than the five hundred thousand, but the drain, section of the drains may bring that estimate down.
Any other questions? Okay, move on to item five point zero seven, review purchase request for auditorium lighting and control upgrades at Jamestown High School.
Yes, our last agenda item, um, is a review, uh, a request for the auditorium lighting controls upgrade at Jamestown High School. As part of the WJCC strategic plan, um, principals and department heads submit requests every year that support educational priorities. And one such request was this review for the auditorium lighting and controls. Jamestown was built in nineteen ninety-seven and the auditorium refurbishment isn't scheduled until fiscal year thirty-two. That recent review, which was requested by the principal, uh, led us to, uh, to, to, to understand that the lighting and controls indicated. Possible failure. Um, those failures would then inhibit our ability for school plays and community events. So we are recommending that we install replacement and lighting theaters, uh, systems in the auditorium. A new panel board, a smart relay panel board, uh, some. Um a new panel board, a smart relay panel board, uh some L E D fixtures amongst some other things that we're estimating to do. Um the project will help resolve the safety and operational issues and the lighting controls. Uh the total cost uh that we've been given a quote for is two hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And a budget transfer from instructional salaries and benefits to the operations line contracted services is requested. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared prepared to vote at the May twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting.
All right, any questions on this one? Doesn't look like it, thank you so much. And we will move into our information discussion items. I um have been given the heads up that there's a number of heavy discussion items on this, so I will probably I'll feel it out, but I'm I will likely call a brief recess sometime in the middle, maybe after six point zero four to give everyone a a quick break if that seems appropriate, so just so you have a heads up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are excited this evening to present the board with uh some information. You heard earlier about our level up days and we are really working specifically around transitioning. Transitioning students into their new grade levels. Uh we're gonna wanna continue to work with transitioning students after they graduate from high school. But here is a a transitioning program, an orientation program for our kindergarten students. Ms. Ford is here to tell us a little bit about what that will look like in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Robin, welcome again.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kever. This afternoon, I am very pleased to share a new project for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year that is designed to provide greater support for our youngest W J C C students as they transition to kindergarten. Kindergarten orientation model will support a successful transition into kindergarten for our students by providing a comprehensive structured process that provides adequate time for children, parents, and guardians to become knowledgeable about the kindergarten experience, time for school staff to more fully understand each student's needs, and time for school teams and division staff to proactively and more effectively support students by assigning staff and instructional resources to students using a well-informed decision-making process. This model prioritizes meaningful engagement, observation, decision-making, and intentional planning to ensure students' needs are understood from the start. For the past two years, we have noted that our youngest learners are disproportionately experiencing behaviors that negatively impact their ability to learn and engage in their school communities to the greatest extent possible. There are compelling reasons beyond the discipline data to consider a new approach for kindergarten transition. Principals have communicated the need for more robust screening opportunities to fully understand all students' needs. Our current registration and class assignment processes provide limited opportunities to gather comprehensive information about incoming kindergartners. A model that incorporates structured orientation and planning days allows educators to consider students' kindergarten-ready skills, assess their stamina and individual needs, which will better inform student placement and resource allocation decisions. The proposed model ensures that every kindergarten student can participate in and benefit from the orientation process, unlike optional summer programs or other opportunities that require parent transportation or conflict with parent work schedules, family vacations, or other factors. This proactive approach aims to create balanced classrooms, strengthen early relationships with families, and provide the foundation of support for our children that will lead to long-term student success. Three schools have been selected and have agreed to participate in the year one implementation of the model, D J Montague, Laurel Lane, and Norwich Elementary. Collectively, these schools and kindergarten enrollment represent the needs of kindergartners across our division. The model will be implemented over the first eight days of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and will be organized into two phases. Phase one will be the student experience days, which will begin on the first day of school, Monday, August twenty-fifth, and conclude on Wednesday, September third. The kindergarten students at the three model schools will report to their home schools on the first day of school, like all other students. During the second phase of the orientation model, the kindergartners at the three model schools will have a student holiday on September fourth and September fifth to provide the time necessary for school teams, administrators, teachers, and support staff to assign students to classes and identify and put into place supports, human and material, that our students need. During the first six school days, the kindergartners at the model schools will experience full school days at their home schools, including lunch, recess centers, and bus transportation. Instruction expected for all kindergarten students in W J C C focused on developing routines and understandings necessary to interact with peers, staff, and instruction in a meaningful manner. Instruction in early literacy and numeracy skills that are the building blocks for future kindergarten instruction. Screening activities to assess students readiness and interactions with school staff who support the kindergarten program. During the student days, all students will engage in initial literacy, numeracy, and motor skills readiness activities while staff gather qualitative and quantitative data on each child's strengths and immediate opportunities. Phase seven and eight will be student holidays, providing the time school staff need to review student observation data and initial screening information, collaboratively assign students to classrooms to ensure balanced and supportive learning environments, identify students in need of early interventions or support services, coordinate with support staff such as reading specialists, counselors, and LEAP teachers to ensure that the school's resources are being used efficiently and effectively to serve all students, and seek division-level supports, resources, and training. Critical components of the kindergarten orientation model are the opportunities for parents and guardians to engage with our schools. Families recently had the opportunity to participate in Family Fest on April twenty-fourth to initiate their K twelve experience. Other opportunities will include engaging with kindergarten readiness information W J C C will share throughout the summer, visiting their home schools, welcome to kindergarten event to meet the kindergarten and school team on the elementary open house day on August twenty-first, becoming involved with their school's P T A, and attending the kindergarten open house event at the end of the orientation period to meet their assigned teachers and visit their assigned classrooms. To summarize, we are compelled to take a new approach to facilitate our students' transition to kindergarten. The intentional model we are designing will ensure kindergartners and their families benefit from receiving better-aligned supports earlier in the school year, balanced communit- classroom communities, and stronger systems of support. We look forward to continuing our work with principals, teachers, and support staff to further develop and implement the kindergarten orientation model. In our next steps, a twenty-three-member planning team will design instructional plans for the student experience days and guidelines for the welcome and open house events, identify screening tools and activities, plan the communication timeline we will follow to inform parents and families about the orientation model, and design an evaluation framework to collect data on the model's impact for students and inform future transition efforts. At this time, I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Any questions, Mr. Hesse?
Can you, I guess, just explain a little bit, days one through six? Um my understanding is, well, I don't know if I have an understanding. Um are they, are the students assigned to a specific classroom during those six days? Are there sort of just a free fall when the students come, they go into a classroom, but they're being evaluated those days? Day seven and eight, the staff is determining, I guess, where the students should go and to which classrooms, then on day nine, the students are assigned a classroom and a teacher and they go forward from there. Is that sort of correct?
So for the first six days, they will not be assigned to the classroom teacher of record for the year. They will be assigned in groups, so they will move throughout the six days and have their experiences as preliminary groups of students, maybe based around um color groups or, you know, red, blue, yellow, or school mascot-related groups, different types of penguins if they're at Laurel Lane. Um but they will be assigned to groups and we've already started talking about ways that we can identify the students within each of those groups so that the school staff know which students are in the group. They have a sense every day of who is responsible for the students and the families feel secure that we know which students are in our buildings and where they are supposed to move throughout the day, including their transportation. On day seven, when the students stay home, um that is when our school teams that morning will look at all of the information that they've been gathering over those initial six days. And that's when they will make those class placement decisions that are typically made in August, long before we get a chance to really meet and spend quality time with our students. Um tho- those class placement decisions, teacher assignment decisions, will be communicated that day to our families. And then our families at the model schools, as part of our communication timeline, will know well before um we get close to school starting again, that there will be a second open house experience for this those students and their families toward the close of that orientation period so that our families have a chance to come back to the school, um meet the assigned teacher of record, um so a second meeting, so to speak, and get to visit the assigned classroom that that student will attend school in. Um and then on day nine, they'll get off the bus and join the day and be ready to fully start their school year.
And have the parents been advised of this, that they that for the first six days, those teachers that this their student or their child has may not be the teacher that they have for the year?
We haven't, you're hearing about the model for the first time this evening, we really haven't broadly communicated the model. Um the principals of the three participating schools have been involved with some of us um with some pre-planning. And then, like I said, the twenty-three-member team will start really digging into the details, part of which will be that communication with families so that they know well in advance. And will be able to communicate those routines and procedures that we'll have in place to make sure that we know who those students are and that we are accounting for them throughout the day and they have adults assigned to them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Mrs. Donner?
I might phrase this incorrectly. Um so I would assume these are for students that would be in what we would consider a traditional classroom, but are kids that have special needs or troubles with transitions like this wouldn't apply to them, or how does that work?
This will apply to all students who are enrolled as kindergartners at these three schools. So we'll be considering all of our kindergartners' needs together individually and then collectively.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
Are there um when people enroll in kindergarten, for those that have previously identified special needs, that might be like in a I'm gonna get the wrong my wording wrong, but in a class, a non-inclusion class, self-contained classroom, are they also a part of that, or is?
Their classroom assignments are based on their I E P, their individual educational plan. Um so we couldn't change their classroom assignment, their teacher of record assignment, but our aim is always to have inclusive events. And so those students would most likely um have already had schedules that would include time in the day for them to be with their general education peers, as is appropriate with their I E P. And so certainly, they would be involved with um these opportunities to build those foundational skills and relationships because that's really where the power of this comes from, is not just starting to build that relationship with the teacher of record and the teacher assistant who may be assigned to that classroom, but really you're building relationships with the entire kindergarten team and with other staff members. And we would want that for all of our incoming kindergartners.
Any other questions?
How how will the groups be determined at during the days seven and eight? When the when the valu- evaluations are made, what 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 are we looking for to how to divide them? And how does that differ from how it's been done in the, I don't know if maybe in the past they just put thirty names here, thirty names there. Um but what is, you know, what it, that's kind of the main difference, and I'm curious what that is.
Yes, so during the six student days, we'll have the opportunity to observe the students, to look at um the readiness skills that they bring. So oftentimes, when we are building classes um for kindergarten in the summertime, we are just looking at whatever information can be communicated to us on a piece of paper. But this allows us to have seen how our students interact um, you know, with each other, how what kindergarten readiness skills they bring with them so that we can not only create classrooms that are balanced socially with needs, but we're looking at many other um aspects of their readiness. And part of the advantage to doing this in within a full school day over six days is stamina really plays an important role in how well a student um can continue to meaningfully engage with their classroom. And so we'll be able to factor in um stamina as well. And again, create balanced classrooms. When you're creating classes for your kindergartners in the summer before you've had a chance to really meet them and get to know what their strengths are and their opportunities, um it it's not unusual to inadvertently put together needs that create imbalance from one classroom to the next. And so this allows us to not assign them to teachers, to create that immediate um bond in that sense and then to make changes later that might be, might feel quite disruptive. We get to know the students and then really make informed decisions. We make very informed decisions about our students um as they are leaving kindergarten for can- rising first through fifth because we know them, we have seen them interact in multiple ways across one hundred eighty days. We know how they interact with peers, with staff, with work, with social situations. And so we can make informed decisions and put together balanced classroom communities in that way. You don't have that advantage for kindergarten.
So when we say balanced, we mean say there are some kindergartners, some that are coming in, they they can already read and some that can't sit down for more than thirty seconds. And so are we trying to evenly distribute those groups and everything in between amongst four or five different classrooms? Or are we trying to take all the ones that that are already advanced and do something with them and?
No, we we always, our goal is that a classroom is um representative of the entire school body. So we want heterogeneous classrooms that really um represent the the diversity of the school population with demographics, with academics. But um for example, if we have seven or eight um little people who are extremely active and need more support, we we wouldn't want to inadvertently put four of them in one classroom. We would want to think about how we can, again, distribute the strengths of our students across all of our classrooms and then the opportunities they represent. But it also allows us to then still manipulate the school schedules of our staff and some of our resources rather than putting them in stone based on what we're predicting um prior to meeting our students. It gives us some flexibility to realize that we need to move more resources to this classroom sooner rather than later. So it's really about trying to be a little more proactive and have more well-informed decision-making.
Okay. Any other questions, Mrs. Henry?
Not a question, but a comment. So this is kind of new, but not, we used to have way back in the day kindergarten jump jump start where kids came in before the summer and we had identified them as usually kids that had anxiety or never had a s- school setting and they got that experience, but it was only half a day. But it was also a small number, so then they got, when they came, it's like, where did these other fifteen kids come from? And so I, the the idea is 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 great. We used to also prescreen every cha- parents could come and have their kids pre-screened. So we would have a better idea of how to balance classrooms. So this is um awesome. I think this is gonna be very helpful and hopefully it'll um pay it's like a pilot, right? So then the other schools can probably do it. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six point zero two, discussion of fiscal year twenty twenty-five year-end projection.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Ewing is gonna join us actually for the next two agenda items. We've been talking about the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-six. I think we've heard publicly that some of the year-end projection funds that we may have perhaps are going to be allocated back to us by the county in order to to support our twenty-six operating budget. We think, though, this presentation typically occurs for the board in June, that it was important for us to bring that to you. We think though this presentation typically occurs for the board in June, that it was important for us to bring that to you in May. Uh, and so Ms. Ewing is going to give you our best thinking right now on that year-end estimate. Renee?
Okay, um, I have to read my disclosure. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the FY twenty-six school budget. Because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools, however, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote. On the budget fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members and Dr. Kiefer. This evening I will be providing an update regarding our projected revenue and expenditures for this fiscal year. This information is projected as well as very preliminary and unaudited and will change as we close out the fiscal year. This slide shows a breakdown of our projected revenue as compared to our budget. We do not yet have our final allocation from the state, the information has been projected based on the most recent cap tool that was provided in March. And our March thirty-first ADM, the federal and other local funds are based on revenue received to date. Our total projected revenue is currently estimated to be one hundred eighty-two million, which is approximately one point two million above our fiscal year. Twenty-five budget of one hundred eighty point eight million. The increased state revenue is made up of anticipated additional sales tax revenue in the amount of five hundred eighty thousand. Anticipated additional state revenue for special education and at-risk in the amount of four hundred three thousand. The increase in other local funds is primarily related to additional interest revenue. Again, all of this information is estimated and may change. Also included in the state budget is approximately one point three million in funding for an employee bonus payment. This revenue is not reflected in the previous slide as we will account for this revenue in our grants fund since it is one-time funding. The state revenue is based on one thousand dollars per SOQ-funded instructional and support positions in school divisions. There is flexibility for school divisions to utilize the funds. And school divisions may supplement the state funds with additional available funds to provide bonuses to other eligible instructional and support positions. While we still need to work out certain details, administration's recommendation would be to provide a one thousand dollar payment to full-time employees. And seven hundred fifty dollars to part-time employees, this would cost approximately two million. The seven hundred forty-eight thousand needed in our budget to support this would come from current salary and benefit savings. We anticipate bringing forward an agenda item in June and making the payment the end of June. Here you will see our projected expenditure status as of the end of April. Our year-to-date expenditures amount to approximately one hundred thirty-seven million and we currently have outstanding encumbrances of six point four million. Included in that encumbrance amount are textbook purchases previously approved by the board. Upgrades for the Berkeley auditorium for school board meetings to take place there. HVAC control upgrades for Stonehouse Elementary, as well as contractual commitments the division has for the remainder of the year. Our projected payroll expenditures for the remainder of the year are estimated to be thirty-two point two million. And projected non-payroll expenditures for May and June are estimated to be one million. In addition, we have the following upcoming expenditures that you've heard about this evening. One bus replacement in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand. Upgrades for the Jamestown Auditorium in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand. As well as the proposed employee bonus payment, which we, which will cost the division approximately seven hundred fifty thousand. These amounts total up to a projected expenditure amount of one hundred seventy-seven point seven million for the year. When you compare our projected revenue to our projected expenditures, the projected estimate of funds remaining at June thirtieth totals approximately. Four point three million. Our understanding is that James City County will be allocating one million towards our fiscal year twenty-six operating budget. And two million towards our fiscal year twenty-seven CIP. Administration recommends requesting any unallocated funds be used for the establishment of a healthcare reserve fund. The projected amount of remaining funds is made up of one point three million in revenue received above our budget. This is based on current projections for state revenue. In the finalized state budget, sales tax estimates are higher for the current fiscal year as well as total lottery proceeds. These two items make up the majority, approximately one million of the projected increase in revenue. There are also savings on the expenditure side where the majority of the savings, two point five million, is from salary and benefit savings. From natural attrition and open positions. As you've heard Mr. Baker say on several occasions, we are constantly recruiting all year long and staffing continues to fluctuate month to month. Throughout the entire school year across all areas of the organization. As an example, vacancies in October were fifty-eight and vacancies in January were seventy-two. Which included positions across the division from instructional to operational. The total projected unspent funds on the expenditure side is three million, which represents about one point seven percent of our total operating budget. Since school divisions in Virginia are not allowed to carry a fund balance, maintaining a portion of our budget as unspent provides a financial buffer. To address unforeseen circumstances such as emergencies and unexpected expenses. I really would not want to go much lower than this amount. In closing, I just want to remind everyone that the information presented this evening is projected as well as preliminary. It will be fine-tuned as we close out the year over the next several months and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing, uh, Mr. Riffle.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing, for your presentation, I have a question about the, um, SOQ funded thousand dollar raises. Or bonuses, um, is, are there SOQ-funded positions that are considered part-time? And they would be receiving less, from my understanding, there are part-time SOQ-funded positions.
The SOQ positions are based on a number of FTEs, so the allocation per school division was. Based on the, um, FTE allocation multiplied by a thousand, I believe. So if our, I, I don't know offhand how much our SOQ positions are, like how many?
Well, I guess like my question is, if there are SOQ positions that are part-time and they're receiving, or I guess they're, they're part-time. And what, they're funded by the state a thousand dollars, why would we not give those positions their thousand dollars? And now we're choosing to choose a full-time rate and a part-time rate?
Most of our part-time positions are actually in the Child Nutrition Services Fund, I believe we may have some custodial positions that are part-time.
So I, I think to your point, there, there might be a couple layers of the question there, one is. How, how many of our SOQ-funded positions are not full-time and we can try to look at that to get that answer. I think is, the couple pieces of the puzzle for us budget-wise or bonus-wise. Thousand dollar bonus is a, a nice way to honor our staff, um, but. At the same time, I, I think that administratively, w- we would prefer to have seen. Those finances added to the, to the overall operating budget opportunity to increase compensation by a percentage point. Uh, as we have previously distributed bonus amounts, we have looked at a tiered process whereby our full-time staff would qualify for the thousand. And our part-time staff would qualify for the seven fifty. We have not formally talked about that as a senior leadership team, fr- frankly, we wanted to get the board this information. Because of the year-end funds being talked about at the county level and so we may bring a revised proposal back to the board in early June. After we've really looked at some of that data, but that's the thinking right now.
So are you looking for board opinions on this now, or?
Think we would probably want board opinion when we bring it to you as an information item at the first meeting in June and then we would, we would gauge your opinion on. The proposal that we put forward and then you would substantiate that, uh, recommendation at your second meeting in June when you vote on it.
If, for the time being, like to see if there's any SOQ-funded positions that are part-time.
Sure.
Or, uh, either way, um, it's, it's just better for us to understand that because the state's funding them at the SOQ position of a thousand dollars. For us to give an employee that's SOQ-funded from the state less would be, I think, a detriment for what that says, so.
I, I do also want to mention that as we look at our Region Two counterparts in terms of how they're using the, the bonus payment. It, it appears, at least from the state level, that there is significant flexibility involved. Uh, so for instance, uh, there are some of our counterparts that are not giving the full thousand. They're giving it to all of their employees at a reduced rate so as not to use any additional operating funds to balance, so. That, that's part of the, the nuance for us, we do have some year-end funding available to be able to try to keep everybody whole. With respect to the bonus payment, but we are tiering it full-time, part-time. Uh, I, I think over the course of the next three or four weeks, you're going to hear about, uh, different structures in each of the divisions. Whereby they are, they're applying a, a, a different model.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer.
Any other questions?
I do think it's important to, to just reiterate that, I, I think the number is four point three is the.
Yes.
The estimate right now in terms of year-end funds. It, uh, I think it was last week or maybe the week before, we did hear pretty specifically. That the board of supervisors intended to help us on the operating budget for fiscal twenty-six by reallocating. A million dollars back into the operating budget, uh, to help us narrow that gap so that, that one million comes out of there. And I do believe that we've, we've understood from the county that an additional amount of our year-end expenditures. I.e. two million will be reallocated back towards the CIP, that's on the county side.
And that, that million, while this year we are, we are using end-of-year funds, which would normally be for a one-time expense, the county is, is. Going to have to be building that extra million into their budget in perpetuity because this is not a one-time use.
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Right, and so, so while, yes, it's, it's our money, but the, the county is going to have to be funding us. With that for, for.
Moving forward, right.
So we are, and so we are grateful for that, um, additional money that they've, um, decided to allocate to us.
Els nicely into the next presentation unless there are additional questions.
You have a question?
Um, I just, I, I thi- I, I think it's fantastic that the county has come back with. Realocating our million to us and I think this, this city has been pretty adamant that it's. Clear that the city fully funded what our original request was and so just that. To just say that, that we are grateful for the city for fully funding and for the county for coming back to try to find some additional to close that gap.
The next piece of the presentation is for us to give you an update on fiscal year twenty-six budget. As we move closer towards what we hope is final adoption on May the twentieth. Uh, Renee, can you talk us through additional information that we've learned?
Um, at the last board meeting, we shared an update on the fiscal year twenty-six budget based on the released localities budgets. Since that time, the state budget has been finalized and we believe there will be additional funding allocated to the school division from James City County. As a reminder, in March, the board approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget in the amount of one hundred ninety-five point two million. Which included a request of the localities of approximately one hundred nineteen point two million. When comparing the amount of funding for the school division in the localities budget documents, the total is one hundred eleven point nine million. Which resulted in a revenue shortfall of seven point three million. To address this shortfall amount, we shared with you at the April fifteenth meeting the recommended expenditure adjustments. These adjustments totaled four point six million, resulting in a revised shortfall amount of two point eight million. Last week, the governor approved the state budget with no changes to K twelve education, which means we will see an additional one point nine million in revenue. From the state. In addition to the one point nine million, the Virginia Department of Education will also continue the funding for the Canvas learning system. This amounts to one hundred thousand. And again, it is our understanding that James City County plans to provide an additional one million to us from the funds that we return at the end of this fiscal year. With these additional funds, which amount to three million sixty-two thousand, it means that we can allocate an additional two hundred eighty-five thousand in expenditures. Administration recommends including these funds in compensation to address the stipend requests and contract day adjustments. We anticipate the city to approve their budget later this week and the county next week, so we will be able to adopt our budget on May twentieth. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mrs. Donner?
Um, so with the, if you go back the one slide to the, where to allocate the additional funds. Um, that two eighty-four, I know, as I've visited elementary schools, they've talked about that elementary. TA support being really important, I'm curious about the, why allocating there as opposed to potentially giving. TAs to a couple of the elementary schools that have the most need.
That's a great question and, and one that we'd be happy to talk about a little bit more, I think that as we looked at. Uh, the amount that we had to cut from our stipends and contract days requests. For people that are already working for us and we were trying to give an a, a little additional amount for what they already do. Uh, we, we put that in a, in a category potentially above adding FTEs. Um, a- as, as we've continued to talk and have conversations around, uh, uh, additional. Staff, it becomes difficult for us to continue to support that just FTE-wise. Uh, I think we're also wanting to look very specifically at the staff that we do have and look at ways to enhance. Behavioral supports at the elementary level with the staff that is currently in place. And if, if there is a possibility as we get the school year started and there are the potential for unfilled positions. And or we have some initial attrition savings, looking to add some temporary positions in as the school year gets started. We felt like, um, on the contract day changes, there were some impactful pieces that we had to cut out. When we trimmed that number to get below, uh, and feel like we should add that back in.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, so.
Thank you, thank you, Renee.
So, maybe you have one more in us, item six point zero four, and then we'll take a recess after the next presentation. Does that, does that sound okay?
As we transition, as we transition into this presentation, um. I want to remind the board of, of course, the next two work sessions administrative staff will be providing. Both the board and the community with an update on our collective efforts, uh, to bring Elevate twenty-eight to life. And as a reminder, the, the board approved the bridge plan in October of twenty-four and that plan includes a number of key performance indicators. For each of the priority areas. Our work since the approval of the plan has included operationally defining the goals for each of the priorities. Formalizing specific action plans and developing a reporting concept map to guide the most appropriate times. To share KPI data with the board and the community. You may also recall that we have launched an initial data dashboard to help our stakeholders access the critical measures. On the plan's success criteria, criteria. The presentation this month and next month will look and feel a little different from past strategic plan updates as we continue to refine. The reporting timelines associated with the data measures of the KPIs. Tonight, we're gonna start with Elevate twenty-eight's supporting priorities in the area of human capital and positive culture, communications and engagement. And organizational efficiency and effectiveness. Data for these priorities will be more readily available in the late summer and early fall. And we'll provide those to the board and community with a full data briefing at the time. Finally, I'd like to reiterate that the supporting priorities we're discussing today are absolutely critical pieces. Of WJCC as we remain focused on the overall key priority of academic achievement. These supporting pieces are vital components for the school division as we work to support the needs of every student in our care. Joining us this evening for the presentation, uh, is Ms. Elena Trot, who is our supervisor for organizational development. Elena?
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, Chair Ordigo and School Board Members. In collaboration with my colleagues, this evening, we are pleased to share updates on key accomplishments related to our strategic supporting priorities. Of human capital and positive culture, communications and engagement and organizational effectiveness and efficiency. The aim of our human capital and positive culture supporting priority is to recruit and retain an exemplary workforce. By creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm. There are five key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the percentage of personnel hired by the first day of school. Annual employee retention rates, our salary ranking in the region, employee perceptions of WJCC public schools fostering a supportive environment. And employee participation and professional learning experiences. Mr. Tim Baker will now share some of the strategic initiatives related to human capital that have been accomplished this school year.
As we continue to focus on recruiting high-quality educators, leaders and support employees, this year we have expanded our outreach through multiple ways. First, as part of the power of school employee. First, as part of the Power School Employee Management System adoption, all of our postings are now visible on Power Schools' School Spring. With more than two million education job seekers nationwide, this platform allows applicants to conduct geographic job searches, so even if someone is not specifically familiar with WJCC schools, they will see our positions if they search for jobs in this area. Applicants will also be able to receive real time email alerts when positions they are qualified are posted. We've also enhanced our in-person recruitment events this year, including hosting a Saturday job fair with over fifty six attendees, an Alternative Pathways Information Event with thirty six attendees, weekly walk-in Wednesdays where support employee applicants can be interviewed on the spot, and in participation in local workforce development job fairs. Additionally, we continue to make early offers to highly talented educators during college visits and job fairs, and we've hired twenty three teachers through this strategy for next year. Finally, our HR department continues to work on digitizing our process through employee records and to streamline paperwork and workflows for both future and current employees. In the area of compensation, earlier this year, an external company conducted a compensation study to provide recommendations for competitive salary increases, including equity pay reviews, and provided consultation on the creation of a unified pay scale for non-instructional employees. We've also completed an RFP for health benefit package, and we will offer the best premium rates for our employees and provide savings to the division so we can prioritize salary increases. Our our employees will also see enhanced voluntary benefit options during open enrollment this June.
As we continue to foster trust and transparency, this year, we have provided ongoing and varied opportunities for employees to provide feedback for continuous improvement. In the fall, we conducted our Elevate Twenty Eight stakeholder survey and hosted both in-person and virtual employee input sessions. In January, an external company also solicited community feedback to help inform our superintendent search. And over the past three months, we facilitated collaborative thinking sessions on professional learning needs and employee focus groups to dive deeper into the themes that emerged from the employee input sessions in the fall. We also continued to meet regularly with members of our teacher forum, Support Employee Forum, and the WJCEA Executive Board to address problems of practice requested by our employees. And finally, tomorrow night, we are excited to enhance our employee recognition through the WJCC Impact Awards, a special event designed to honor both our Teachers of the Year and Support Employees of the Year in a combined celebration. In the area of organizational development, last summer, we provided multiple options for teachers to participate in Camp GPS. These paid professional learning sessions provided teachers with the curriculum knowledge and resources to begin collaboratively planning for new state standards and expectations. Middle school teachers also shared student engagement strategies for transitioning to a block schedule. Participant feedback was overwhelmingly positive, with ninety percent of participants stating Camp GPS was worth their time and they would attend a similar opportunity in the future. This year, we also expanded new teacher supports with our Launch and Learn Series that equipped first year teachers with instructional strategies, classroom management advice from veteran teachers, and space to build community with other novice educators. Next, with the addition of the three elementary collaboration learning and planning days, we seized the opportunity to not only engage our teachers in professional learning, but we also hosted literacy, math, behavior, and technology sessions for all of our elementary paraprofessionals, so they would have the knowledge and skills to support students in the classroom. And finally, perhaps the highlight of our new program was the Stars Para Academy. Using a cohort model, this four-session series allowed us to differentiate professional learning for forty five new and experienced paraprofessionals. Topics included foundations of literacy and math and high-quality instruction, supporting learners receiving special education and multilingual services, proactive and positive interventions for student behavior, and collegial collaboration. Additionally, participants in the cohort were able to attend the para pro prep sessions, skill builder sessions, to prepare them to take the para pro exam. In all, this program was a success, with ninety five percent of participants stating they would highly recommend the Stars Para Academy to other paraprofessionals in the division. As we continue to build leadership capacity throughout the division, this year, we kicked off our first cohort of cognitive coaching, a two-year research-based peer coaching program that enhances employees' planning, reflecting, and problem-solving processes. And as part of our Leadership and Learning Series, school and division leaders participated in empathy-centered learning experiences, including showcasing, I'm sorry, shadowing a student for an entire school day, or shadowing an employee for an entire workday, and also participating in learning walks and facilitating focus groups. These opportunities gave us deeper understanding of the lived experiences of those we serve so we can become better leaders in meeting their needs. And finally, we're continuing to build our leadership bench through our partnership with Old Dominion University. This past December, our first cohort graduated with their administrative degrees and endorsements, and next week, we will kick off our second cohort with eleven new aspiring administrators. Be happy to pause at this time to see if there are any questions related to this supporting priority.
Any questions from the board? Doesn't look like it.
Great, we'll move on to communications and engagement. The aim of our communications and engagement supporting priority is to cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. There are four key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the number of communications that highlight student and staff success and division news, family participation in division-sponsored events, volunteer participation, and community partnerships. Mrs. Cara Wall will now highlight some of the accomplishments related to this supporting priority.
Thank you. Good afternoon. In the world of communication, the twenty four twenty five school year kicked off with our Find Your Focus campaign, a response to Governor Yonkin's Executive Order thirty three issued in July twenty twenty four, which required school divisions to establish cell phone-free educational environments and policies. Communication around this plan required awareness, understanding, and sustainability to ensure its success, and we're proud of the multifaceted efforts to ensure this was a smooth transition for our students, staff, and families. As shared earlier, we have provided several pathways for stakeholders to provide feedback this school year, but perhaps one of our favorites was the Student Voices Tour. Hearing from more than one hundred and twenty five students was both authentic and humbling, and we look forward to integrating their initial recommendations into our strategic plan and continuing to elevate their voices in collaborative decision-making in the months ahead. Our team has also increased our multimedia storytelling this year. Our superintendent reports and school spotlights have included multimedia segments to highlight the incredible work of our school communities, and we've also used video to deliver more complex messages to the public around topics such as the budget and policy changes. And finally, we have made enhancements to our external print publication efforts to include sending community-wide mailers, passing out promotional information cards at events, and publishing Spanish language versions of mass communications. In the area of family engagement, we welcomed an additional parent liaison community outreach coordinator to support our multilingual families. We also hosted several high-interest family academy events, including a three-part Brain Hacks series with our school psychologists, a webinar on the new Virginia literacy expectations for elementary, two webinars on artificial intelligence in education, and a webinar on special education transition services. We also launched family academy newsletters, and as was shared earlier, welcomed more than eight hundred attendees to our kindergarten registration event, which was almost a thirty percent increase from last year. In the areas of volunteerism and partnerships, we're in the process of establishing a streamlined partnership database, excuse me, that will also allow us to both identify and recognize businesses and organizations who contribute to the overall mission of our school division. We have also shared volunteer impact stories with the media so they can honor these individuals and promote volunteerism. We also engage the community through the Blair Renaming Consideration Committee, which has been rich with diverse perspectives and dialogue. In expanding our partnerships, we have hosted WJCC Family Nights in conjunction with William and Mary Athletics, and established new partners for our career readiness events that allow high school students to explore pathways of interest and network with potential employers in the area. These opportunities help us bridge curriculum to the real world, which is what our students have asked for and what we know will motivate them to continue their education. I'm happy to pause here at this time to see if there's any questions related to this supporting priority.
Anything from board members? I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, round three. The aim of our organizational efficiency and effectiveness supporting priority is to optimize division effectiveness and efficiency by establishing and strengthening processes and systems. There are seven key performance indicators that help us measure this priority, including the percentage of budget reversion funds, the percentage of capital improvement projects completed on time and within budget, the mean time to repair maintenance work orders, our bus on-time rate, the average time that our network is accessible and operational, the number of vendors who are paid electronically, and the average repair time for all division-issued computing devices. Mrs. Renee Ewing, Mr. Marcellus Snipes, and Mr. Brian Landers will now share some of the strategic initiatives related to this supporting priority.
Relative to the current budget, I am pleased to share that our year-end projections are on target to meet our reversion funding KPI of no greater than two and a half percent. Additionally, we were able to integrate year one recommendations from the compensation study into our proposed budget and reallocate previous grant-funded positions into the operating budget, including the K five literacy coordinator position, two speech and language pathologists, and nine elementary school security officers. In the area of accounting, we have surpassed our KPI benchmark of switching vendors to electronic payments. Our goal for this school year was twenty five percent, and we are currently at fifty three percent of eligible vendors receiving direct deposit or ACH payment. We have also enhanced our communication with employees by sending automated notifications via email when a reimbursement has been direct deposited to their accounts. Additionally, we are currently collaborating with Amazon to enhance our business-related services that will allow for streamlining online purchases through their platform. And finally, we are always happy to celebrate a perfect external audit and receiving the Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence and Financial Reporting Award for the twenty twenty four fiscal year.
The operations team is also pleased to share that we are on track to meet our KPIs. Nine out of eleven capital improvement projects did not exceed budget, and all projects are on track to be completed before the end of the school year. We've also completed the preschool centers design process and have created inclusive playground standards for all WJCC elementary schools to ensure accessibility and safety. Finally, we've initiated the bidding process to install solar energy panels on our school buildings, which will yield long-range savings and environmental sustainability. WJCC CNS team has partnered with the Williamsburg Health Foundation to provide students access to meals during the summer. The Healthy, Educational, Appealing, and Tasty, better known as the HEAT, summer meal program will serve at will be served at select schools and or delivered to students. Some additional highlights during the school year were that CNS applied for and received the No Kid Hungry grant for twenty four thousand six hundred dollars, which was used at Blair, Lafayette, Jamestown, and Warhills. Those funds expanded access to grab-and-go breakfasts, promoted the awareness of meal availability to students and families, especially those who were in the free and reduced price eligibility range, and increased participation in the school breakfast program. Lastly, CNS was awarded a Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant at James River. In the area of transportation, we completed a bell time optimization study to improve route efficiency, and we were able to continue our school bus replacement plan by procuring ten replacement school buses. We're thankful for the opportunity to enhance bus driver recruitment and retention efforts and appreciate your support by providing a three dollar per hour pay increase and hosting events such as our Drive a Bus event and our bus rodeo, capturing media attention and community interest.
People wonder what it would be like to drive a school bus. Williamsburg James City County Public Schools offered people a chance to test drive one today, and of course, our Stephanie Hudson, she took him up on it, got behind the wheel. Steph, besides being cool, what was this driving like?
Well, Tom, there is a school bus driver shortage, and I guess I figured if I can drive a bus, anyone can.
Hi.
Hi. Go ahead and take a seat.
All right. Getting behind the wheel of this massive machine is well outside my comfort zone.
My husband has a Lincoln Navigator, and I hate driving it because I think it's too big.
After showing me the controls, trainer Andrew Fitzher offered some advice.
Be careful of your corners. Don't get too close to a curb.
Surprisingly, I could see way more through this huge windshield than in any SUV, exactly what the school system had in mind.
What we're trying to show is that it's easier than what they may expect. You know, some people have a fear of larger vehicles.
About twenty five potential applicants signed up to take a test drive.
I have actually always thought that when I retire, I could potentially go be a bus driver as something to do. I'm not going to be able to sit at home.
Nick Kerr already works for the school system.
I was surprised at how, like, well the bus turned. It was actually very easy to drive.
Of course, there's a lot more to this job than just perusing a parking lot. The school district will pay for you to get a CDL license and pay starts at twenty twenty six an hour. There's a sign-on bonus, and parents can bring their kids over age two to work with them.
I think the difficult part about it is really getting over your old fears.
Honestly, getting the seat low enough for my petite five-foot-one frame was the toughest part. There we go. I didn't hit anything, even parked between the lines, bringing this test to a safe stop. I think we're dangling, but they told me that was a fluke. It actually doesn't happen to anyone else. Anyway, the Williamsburg James City County School District is currently short thirty four drivers. If you're interested in a job or a test drive, give them a call or click on the link with this story on wavy.com. Stephanie Hudson, ten on your side.
Yes.
Looks like a lot of fun.
I asked just one question. It went really fast, but Mr. Snipes, what did you say about Lafayette's track? I saw something said Lafayette's track. What is the update on that?
It should be done before the end of this school year. Is it already done now?
It is already done.
It is it is done now, is what I meant to say.
Okay, thank you.
So in the area of technology, while it's been a challenging year, we have made significant gains in both our network infrastructure and hardware. We completed a division project to upgrade our switches division-wide and learned a lot by recovering from a critical network outage. Throughout that process, we were able to use a triage method to protect instructional time and provide workarounds to ensure continued division operations. We also refreshed two thousand student devices and were able to contain and recover from a critical blue screen error. Finally, we are on track to meet our KPI of a five-day average repair time, currently maintaining a four point nine day average. We are also proud that our Enterprise Student Information Team received the twenty twenty four Synergy Achievement Award, and our tech support team again completed the Lenovo Self-Maintainer Status. And finally, in the area of instructional technology, WJCC leaders participated in the Video E S A I Year of Learning Cohort, which assisted us in establishing guiding principles for the ethical use of artificial intelligence and a cross-departmental implementation plan. Through a grant partnership with William and Mary, we will continue this work through an AI Ambassador's Program that will kick off this summer and allow us to leverage early adopters in diffusing innovation across the division. We are excited to share this collaborative work at the BSB A Conference this July. I'll be happy to pause at this time to see if there are any questions related to this supporting priority.
Any questions?
Just a funny technology story. When we went through our little hiccup with the, you know, when we didn't have tech, this young teacher said, I had to write down the students' names and send it to the office for attendance.
Old school.
I was like, and? I didn't get it at first, and I was like, I had to do that for many years, but that was funny. I just forgot that that's not the norm.
There are workarounds available.
All right, well, this concludes the highlighted accomplishments for these supporting priorities, and we look forward to sharing updates on our key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity, and our supporting priority of safety and security with you at the June third school board meeting. and our supporting priority of safety and security with you at the June third school board meeting. And as previously shared, we will have a comprehensive update on our key performance indicators for you in the fall once that data becomes available and verified.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could just mention that as we go through these retrospectives and think back about the year, we're at the beginning of May, and I turned to the chair during the presentation on Find Your Focus, and it is hard for me to fathom that Find Your Focus was at the beginning of this school year, and it's just amazing what the talented staff has been able to accomplish over the course of this year. So I hope you feel some level of just excitement around the things we've been able to share, and we look forward to sharing more of that with you in June.
Thanks for that reminder. We will now take a five-to-seven-minute break, and we will continue after that. We will reconvene our meeting now. And we will jump back in at item six point zero five, Employee Focus Groups, Student Behavior and Communication and Organizational Systems.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of reminder and background, last fall, we hosted eight employee input sessions to identify the needs and priorities of team members throughout the school division. We were incredibly grateful for the seventy-six participants who provided us with that feedback and those open-ended discussions. We also wanted to have deeper conceptual understanding of the themes that emerged in those initial conversations. At the time of, at the time, the compensation study was well underway, and we felt certain that that would yield recommendations that would align with employee values that we heard. The other three themes involve student behavior, communication, and organizational structure. To help us with these themes, we organized two focus groups and asked each principal to identify two representatives from their school to serve as liaisons in the process. The first group focused on student behavior and was led by Dr. Adam Brown and Mr. Chris Old. The second group focused on communication and organizational systems and was led by Cara Wall and Elena Trot. The focus groups met two times to discuss the data that had already been collected from the input sessions and collaboratively generated essential questions that they would in turn ask their colleagues at their respective schools. The majority of the liaisons decided to conduct informal surveys in the buildings and then offered live sessions for employees to share their feedback in person. After gathering the additional data, each of those representatives provided a report to the facilitators. The focus groups then reconvened for a second meeting to discuss the common themes and identify and prioritize recommendations, which we will share with you this evening. I think it's important to note that there was a great level of consistency between the feedback provided at the input sessions that was discussed in liaison meetings and that the additional perceptions the liaison meetings gathered from their colleagues. Things are aligning. It's also important to keep in mind that the nature of the two topics that you're going to hear about this evening is a little different. On the communication side, you're going to see more task-oriented recommendations and next steps. And on the behavior side, you're going to see more conceptual recommendations. However, in both scenarios, we are confident that these recommendations are both practical and meaningful in terms of our responses to our employees' needs. Cara?
Thank you, Dr. Keever, and good afternoon again. Several areas of staff feedback pertain to internal communication systems, how we might utilize or better utilize the systems and structures we have to ensure we are communicating effectively with our internal stakeholders. For example, we currently generate twice-monthly staff newsletters, but we have an opportunity based on the feedback to better archive that content so it is more accessible. Likewise, weekly principal packet memos, communication that's already generated, could be shared directly with impacted audiences a few days after its original release to principals. Our colleagues value understanding the why behind decisions. Video messages may help deliver those important details and, when applicable, also offer links to more detailed information. For safety and job-related work functions, employees seek Wi-Fi network access on their personal devices from their work locations. To boost efficiency, there's an interest in further digitizing or automating traditionally paper-based workflows. And finally, staff want expanded senior leader engagement and connection to schools and school staff. As it relates to our family audience, or more specifically, our teachers' interaction with our family audience, there's a desire for a campaign targeting families to boost their awareness, understanding, and use of the many functions of parent view, not the least of which being the ability for families to see academic progress and set personalized notification preferences. To complement families' abilities to access and set alerts about their children's progress, staff has, staff have asked for consistent expectations related to releasing academic progress updates. Previously, it was reported that messages sent from a teacher to a whole class would be designed differently than those sent from a teacher to one family within the parent view system. The visual difference would signal to a family if the communication was specific to their individual child or broad to the entire class population. The differentiated visual was helpful, and it is recommended to research if that can be restored within the system. Our colleagues seek additional support and training on designated communication tools or platforms and explicit direction on which platforms are not to be used. And finally, there's a strong desire at the elementary level to restore back-to-school nights within the first few weeks of the new school year, those obviously being different from the open houses that are offered the week before school begins. The sessions were a valuable opportunity for elementary staff to foster relationships with families and share classroom routines, expectations, and more. Such an event in the same in-person format at the secondary level would not be as effective, but perhaps virtual information sessions could be offered as a parallel opportunity.
Another subtopic that emerged was organizational structure. Specifically, employees would like a more detailed picture of the central office positions and workflow. Recommendations for this theme included posting an organizational chart and an operational who-to-call directory on the employee internet, creating a five-year cycle for reviewing and revising employee job descriptions to ensure they accurately align with their work and compensation level, including those positions that receive stipends. And members also felt this should be a collaborative process with employees who represent each position being reviewed. Finally, they also recommended implementing the recommendations from the compensation study on creating consistency in position titles. The final subtopic that emerged for this focus group was stakeholder input relative to strategic planning. First, the liaisons provided positive feedback about the ad hoc focus groups as a structure for collecting feedback and collaborating on recommendations for continuous improvement. Additionally, there was a lot of dialogue around trust when it comes to employee surveys. To help establish trust, they recommended defining levels of anonymity in the introductory sections of all surveys and creating standardized statements that disclose if participant identity will be known or if some or no identifiable information will be collected within that survey. They also suggested that administration publish reports for each survey so employees can see the varying perspectives across the division and subsequently understand related action steps. Another discussion point was around employee knowledge and involvement in implementing our strategic plan. They recommended efforts to increase awareness and understanding of how new initiatives relate to the strategic plan and encouraged employee participation in creating strategic action plans. They also suggested publishing phased implementation plans for any major initiative to ensure clarity around short-term and long-term objectives for those initiatives. And finally, they recommended continued communication with funding partners to ensure they are aware of our long-term goals and can anticipate and allocate resources accordingly. We're happy to pause and take any questions you may have related to the Communication and Organizational Systems Focus Group at this time.
I don't have a question, but a comment. We started off really well with pictures of who was in central office, even for us, because I remember Starr went and took pictures of everyone and had their titles. And then somehow we dropped the ball, but that is so vital, even for us, because people are in here sometimes, and I didn't know, I don't know who they are. So I don't even know who to send my constituents to sometime because I don't have a face or a name. So we started it, and it fell by the wayside, but I hope we really can do that and continue to update it when people leave.
And part of that recommendation, which is simple yet meaningful, was to not just provide the name, the contact information, and the title, but maybe list some of the major tasks that they're responsible for.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Adam Brown will now share the recommendations from the Student Behavior Focus Group.
On the topic of behavior, feedback from the focus groups reveal consistent themes across elementary and secondary. First, teachers express a strong need for more clarity and consistency on how students' beha, student behaviors are addressed. They want to better understand the connection between the referral they make, the consequences student receives, and the supports that are provided afterwards. Teachers identified how this level of communication can aid in the ability to facilitate restorative conversations with the student, provide additional interventions, and reflect on their own practices within the classroom. Next, teachers are asking for more alignment between the behaviors being referred and the consequences assigned. This includes seeing more consistency in how discipline is applied, or being aware of how discipline is applied within administrative teams. They also emphasize the importance of increasing staff, student, and parent awareness of the code of conduct, student expectations, and available supports within the division. There is a deeper call for collaboration between teachers and administrative teams to have regular conversations about the topic of student behavior to include review of classroom and building expectations, classroom management resources, and greater supports for students with intensive behavioral needs, particularly those requiring tier-three interventions. Additional themes emerged that were unique to elementary and secondary. I think it's important to point out that it has pre-K through five because we did have a bright beginnings representative as well on the focus group. At the pre-K to five level, teachers are asking for more consistency on how discipline is handled across classrooms. They noted the extensive work that school administration and support staff do to respond to behavior concerns, but shared that several factors, including availability and staffing, can lead to inconsistent responses on how the support can be provided. They seek to ensure that instructional time is protected for teaching desirable behaviors and reinforcing those behaviors. This is often offered through morning meetings and making sure that happens each day. When it comes to professional learning, staff emphasize the need for more division-wide behavioral training as required for all employees, including support and operational staff. There is also a strong interest in creating a centralized canvas page where staff can access resources such as classroom management plans and asynchronous trainings anytime that they need them. Teachers advocated for behavioral support and also for support for the increased mental health services addressing the growing needs of our elementary-age students. At the secondary level, staff stressed the importance of providing increased expectations to students returning from suspension. This included having students meeting with their referring teacher for restorative conferences, completion of reflective assignments while on in-school suspension. While this does occur at some schools, it's not standard across all settings. Teachers emphasized the importance of streamlining the referral system for minor behaviors. One teacher noted that submitting tardies through the online referral system can be cumbersome and take away from instructional time, and at times, it could potentially discourage a teacher from submitting their referral. Creating easier pathways to report common disciplinary occurrences like tardies was a strong request from the group. There was a strong call for alignment and expectations. Staff noted the need for consistent enforcement of the building and classroom expectations that are upheld by all staff. This includes a clear understanding of what constitutes as a tardy and potentially limiting hallway pass use. This includes a clear understanding of what constitutes as a tardy and potentially limiting hallway pass use. A clear understanding of expectations for students that are upheld by all staff leads to more predictable and supportive learning environment environment for students and staff alike. It's important to note that this strongly aligned with input that we received from students during the student voices tour about clarity and expectations. Across the building. Lastly, we continue to hear the need for more options that are available for students in need of intensive supports. This includes the identification of supports available within the school building or in the community. And feedback supported the continued expansion of our restorative center. The input provided throughout this process has been invaluable and serves as a key component of planning for the upcoming school year. First, we are expanding professional learning opportunities in classroom management, including the development of on-demand training modules that staff can access at their convenience. We're also working with schools to review their behavioral referral process with improvements improvements to both reporting and communication systems to ensure clarity, follow-up, and accountability. To improve understanding of behavioral expectations, we're increasing access and resources available within the code of conduct. Which will be shared during the June board work session. And developing companion resources to help both staff, students, and parents navigate it more effectively. At the building level, we continue our systematic review of discipline data to help guide decision-making and monitor progress. We will work alongside building administrators to facilitate discussions with staff on the topic of student behaviors and support throughout the school year. We're preparing to offer informational sessions for families designed to build shared understanding, not only the discipline process, but also how to access supports. Strengthen homeschool partnerships, and this will be included in an upcoming family academy session. Finally, we continue to advocate for the expansion of non-traditional options to better support students who may benefit from alternative pathways, as well as increased supports. For students receiving tier three interventions.
This time, we would like to thank all of our focus group liaisons for their leadership and willingness to engage. In what we consider to be incredibly authentic dialogue. We are grateful for your time. As I speak to you directly, hopefully you're watching the presentation. And developing trust with colleagues throughout the feedback process. In addition to integrating these recommendations into our Elevate twenty-eight action plans. We will also include this presentation in this week's staff update email. And request that our focus group liaisons share these recommendations with their colleagues during a faculty meeting. Prior to the end of the school year. Progress will also be included in our annual strategic update presentations. This time, the team is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, any questions or comments from the board? Mister Riffle?
I do have a co- a question, but I do have a comment. Um I should say thank you for the follow-up for this type of presentation. I think it's something that. As board members or as we discussed when we talked about this topic and trying to poll our own staff and kind of hear how we're making. How are we using the data that was collected, right? I think that's like it's back to you. And it's just good to see like there's progress in these categories and. And it, and even in our student advisory committee, like our students can feel these impacts and so um I'm just excited to see how we can get further. Uh move through this process and and can I keep doing things like this? Um cause even when you've kind of got it right for this time, I'm sure there's things. Will pop up. It's like, it's like ironing out copper is what they say, right? It's like, it's gonna keep bending in another place, so thank you.
Mister Riffle, I wanna, I wanna commend the staff that worked with the focus groups. When you conduct these type of sessions, it is, it is labor intensive. But the, the data gathered and the opportunity for us to make informed decisions based on perspectives in each of our buildings is enhanced. So I, I really appreciate Miss Trot, Dr. Brown, Miss Wall, Mister Old, uh for their investment and. And desire to really hear from our staff on this, and I look forward to continuing these kinds of. Focus groups as we move into the summer and into the next school year.
Yeah, I think this, I think this was excellent. This is. Feels like real tangible information that is actionable and um I hope that, you know, I trust that. It will, it will be acted upon. I'm, I'm curious if we will get, I know it says report progress on recommendations um. Is that reporting it back to the board?
In the strategic, so this time next year, you should see some of these in the presentation we did prior to this one.
Okay, so we'll be able to gauge whether.
Absolutely.
Feel like, okay, these, all of these boxes were checked and now we have new complaints, but.
New opportunities to solve the challenges in front of us. I, so it's a part of us, part of our, I, I think thinking is that. There are some simple recommendations that, that we can take care of right away, and there are others that perhaps require. Additional focus group conversations and planning around them. So that we can continue to refine our work centrally in support of schools. And, and I think that you will see this as a part of our monthly report outs, school board meetings. Conversations with staff and, and things that we publish, to answer your question.
Great, thank you, Mrs.
And just one more compliment, um a former school board member from another division. Uh called me to say he was so impressed with, impressed with our dashboard, even though we were working on it, and he was like. They had been wanting to do something like that in his division, and he was like, I can't believe you all have that up and running. It looks so good. And so that, just wanted to say that was a compliment from another board member in another division.
Thanks.
Alright, I think.
Would you hand me the clicker, Miss Tron?
Right, we'll move on to item six point zero six, exploring student representation on the school board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I wanted to set the stage a little bit on. A topic that has come forward through conversations with board members uh around. What, what might it entail or what could it look like potentially if the board wanted to consider adding a student representative? Uh the Virginia School Board Association has a, a very specific. Set of recommendations in order to get that accomplished, and the, the presentation this evening will build on that. Uh and I hope to, to listen to the dialogue of the board and take. Take next steps based on the, the feedback and perspective of the board. What does Virginia Code allow? And Virginia Code does allow for school boards to appoint a student representative in a non-voting advisory role. Uh the board, by way of a policy or regulation, determines selection process, student engagement scope, and the terms. Uh and it, I think it's important to note for the board and in the viewing public as we're talking about this, that students would be excluded from closed. And executive sessions. Part of the rationale for including a student representative involves direct student voice. And the idea that that fosters transparency and relevance with a deeper understanding of student needs. Perhaps enhances decision-making and board awareness. And then what I think is a important byproduct from my perspective, building student leadership capacity. Civic engagement and connection to the broader community. There are likely a number of ways that students strengthen our work, your work. I think as we've talked over the course of the last month, whether it be the student voices tour or heard reports from the board around the student advisory group. There is an opportunity to really understand the student insight and perspective. Around schooling, that schooling's not done to them, but that schooling is done with them and for them. I think it provoke promotes a more inclusive, responsive culture in terms of leadership. I think the board would need to decide if it's a board culture that it promotes inclusive inclusivity. I look forward to that discussion. And then I think it also inspires student-led initiatives in a stronger school climate. A direct student voice fosters transparency, enhances decision-making. I think I've already shared this line. What's important, I think, for the board to be aware of is how does it look in some other school divisions? Uh here are four examples. For your awareness, sixty-two school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia use some form of a student representative on the board. And it takes lots of different formats. Uh one of the items in executive content for you is a listing of some responses to questions that our clerk has asked. Her colleagues to, to respond to, so that is in executive content for you to look at, but here are four examples. Albemarle County uses four rotating reps. They serve three-month terms and students provide reports at each meeting. Alexandria City has two high school and four middle school. Uh they use a pretty strengthened application and selection process. Prince William County uh has an application process that involves interviews, essays, and civic engagement. And then Dinwiddie County uses a, a selection process that's really driven by a student advisory council. And then a, a, a formal code of ethics. The, the how we may do it in Wayne Per James City County, I think it would be derived from perspective of the board. Perhaps based on some administrative suggestions, if this is something that we wanted to move forward with. In general, uh as we look across the Commonwealth. Student representatives attend the regular open meetings and work sessions. Different boards have different structures with respect to the formal meetings or work sessions. Most often, students are presenting some type of student report. They are encouraged to engage with student groups at their school for specific feedback around topics of interest. And then contribute to discussions on items uh during board meetings. I'm gonna pause there and uh listen for questions and discussions from the board in terms of potential next steps. Uh and, and relative to this idea.
Are there any board members that wanna kick off the discussion?
Well, I'm excited about it. Every time we go to a conference, we, they, they have presentations where students. Are sharing how it looks in their division and um. We already have a student advisory council, so that's the first step. It's just the working it out, like how, like. You know, how, who they'll pick to, you know, come and um give us information, have a, usually they have a lead person and then an alternate. So I'm just excited we're having the conversation and I would love to be able to have it. Um a student rep next year, but definitely they, they have to know it's a commitment. Cause it's, it would definitely take commitment, so.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm the board member who has been pushing for this for a while. I think young people. Um in our community, and especially being part of the student advisory committee. Uh we, we try to find a way for the way that they could, we can hear from our high schoolers, you know, we do do our reports from our schools. Um, um, just kind of like what's going on and like one, one, uh one of our meetings uh every month. Doesn't cover all of our high schools. This would be a chance for our high schoolers to kind of give examples of. How their houses or how their schools are up to, what they're volunteering in, what their clubs are doing, you know, what their sports are up to. Um it also giving opinions on like policy changes in which they will impact them and. Um and talking about just kind of like what's going around around town or whatever it may be, like this is what I think kind of becomes something that's like student-led to an example. As much as this board produced, um the point is that we allow for a voice like that here. I've heard and read a lot of studies about these things. I won't bear those things in mind, but I think it's really productive for a community to see. I think from discussions I've had with other boards, members and chairs and. Uh whether large or small, like this is a beneficial thing they find, uh and it allows for their students who are almost everything to receive scholarships from the V S B A. There's a lot of things that can go in the same, so I just don't want to miss the mark on stuff that we could be producing for our students to have opportunities, so. I'm, I'm a big believer in this. I'm happy to kind of discuss what that may look like um and give some two cents on that too, but.
Good, thank you. Thoughts from board members, Mister Hosey?
I, I'll just say that we already have student input through the student uh advisory committee. Um and so I would, and. The, the comments from the students come through that committee. They come to then to our board members and the board members then will report to um us what the students are saying. To me, I would, I think that's would be enough for the students to come do that. I think asking them to do, take on this. Um duty is, would be uh a challenge for them, um just for the time commitment, um part of it. If students were concerned about what we do as a school board, I would have expected that we would have received emails. We, I would have expected that students would have come and spoken out to the board members at, at our, um at our monthly meeting. They haven't done that, so to me, I think having the student advisory committee, having the students talk to the board members. Uh at that committee and having those board members come and talk to us about the student uh needs or concerns uh would be sufficient.
Um I'll chime in. I think um my perspective on this is that um I'm, my. Just by looking through the, I appreciate the presentation and also this additional information here. Just by sort of perusing it and I'll definitely dig into it more. It seems like this, the idea from, from many of the school boards with a student rep is that it's overwhelmingly positive. So to me, that's evidence that, you know, um there is benefit in it. It seems to be a positive experience for the students as well as the board um in informing decisions. I do see a difference between us exploring a student representative on the board versus. What Mister Riffle and I do um in engaging with students. Uh with the student advisory committee. Um we don't often bring, we only meet with them. This year, because of the snow days, we, we were only me- able to meet with them three times, and although they were. They were well attended and the students were enthusiastic and they provided great feedback and each time we met with them, it was about. It's about like an hour and a half, right? Um and there's, you know, one student from each grade, so you know roughly a dozen kids. We don't get to get their sort of timely feedback on. Issues that may come up before the board. Uh that I think we could benefit from student voice. If we say that we care about student voice, there's a, there's an opportunity. Also, I would say for the students that Mister Rufflin I've interacted with, they, they are very eager to participate. Um I have floated the idea, just in discussion, we try to make it very casual. And there seems to be an interest. So they, they don't seem to think that it's a bad idea, it's too, you know, that we didn't get, I didn't get that sense. So I think that they're interested, they're curious. They may not have ever thought about it because they didn't think it was an opportunity that was even available, so. I think that's part of teaching is just giving kids that opportunity. Would you be interested in that? At our last meeting, we even kind of floated the idea of, you know, how can we include more of your leadership? Cause often, you know, we, we know that they're busy, so we come with an agenda and we have items to discuss. Um but there seemed to be genuine interest in, you know, maybe we wanna lead. Um something or, you know, have more um feedback on particular policy, you know, so. We, we just, we had a very fruitful discussion and so. I, I would be interested in further exploring this idea and, and how it could work for our board. I like the idea that. You know, it seems like in code, we, we can make it our own. We can figure out what works for us. We can obviously get valuable input from administration and. And maybe even engage student input and what that might look like. Uh so that's, that's sort of, I'm excited about it.
Other comments?
Um I'll speak. Having sat on the uh student advisory committee my first year on the board, I would kind of concur in that. The students there are really engaged and they are excited and, I mean. And they watch, there's a lot of students that actually watch our board meetings. Um I think that there are, eh eh, we don't have the opportunity to hear from them on matters. That would impact them as we're making decisions. And so I think it's an important opportunity to bring them forward. I think given as I'm reading through what other divisions do, it's not on one person. They have either two or three. I think you would have at least one from every high school at a minimum. Um so that allows them to rotate um according to their schedules and I, I just think it is. If we are going to be kind of student-centered and elevating, I think really being able to hear directly from them. Uh is important, so I'm, I'm in favor of trying to figure out some way to, to elevate our student voice.
Um I, I would think that um student voice would be interesting. Uh I, it seems to me from listening to my colleagues that the student advisory committee does a good job of. Um sounding out um student body um thoughts and actions and what they're thinking. I don't know that it would add a lot more to their voice by having somebody come on our board. The board takes, it takes a fair amount of commitment and it uh, it, I don't know how. I'd like to think it would be a, a very positive thing and help us make decisions, but. I, I'm not convinced that it would do that. It, it, it would be an, an opportunity for a student and I can appreciate that. But oftentimes, the backdoor discussion, the backroom discussion, making phone calls among. Board members um is the real um purpose of the board, and that's how we get a lot of business done. I think if they wanna present to the board a particular topic, that would be interesting, but I'm not sure that I would wanna put a student on a board full-time.
Has that, has everyone commented? Mrs. Hunley, did you comment?
Already did.
Yeah, you did. You were first.
I would, I would describe myself as apprehensive but open minded. I I I would just have a lot of questions and it would really come down to how how it was executed. I have also served on the student advisory committee and um while I think that is in. Uh theory. Valuable committee and I I know you all do good work um whenever you whenever you do get to meet, but I think that. Our our first starting point might be revamping the student advisory committee um and expanding that or or having it. Be reimagined in a way that is more meaningful, that does provide more feedback, uh perhaps expanding. So that more more students can participate. Perhaps then, perhaps that is then somehow in conjunction with a student rep. Perhaps that's where a student rep then comes from. I I'm not sure. There's a there's, you know, it's a lot of hypotheticals at this point. So the yeah, there's a lot of different ways to imagine it. So like I said, I'm I'm open minded. I'm I appreciate and value student voices. I'm I'm I'd be concerned if there was a, if they weigh in on every topic or if there's certain. Topics where, for example, with the with the cellphone situation, I wonder. I I know we've now gotten a lot of anecdotal positive feedback even from students, but I wonder if in the evolution of that. That's if that would have been the feedback from students and would we have perhaps been swayed not to do that, make a kinda grown up decision. On behalf of children that actually served them well. I I don't know, cause we didn't, we didn't ask, you know, but um. So I just, I I'd be concerned about topics like that where where sometimes you just have to make the make the decision, but um. Dr. Kever.
Sure. I think one of the things that will emerge in the next month, five weeks or so, will be a a transition plan. That I need to put together uh as I transition into the to the role. And one of the things that I think that you'll hear from me during the development of that and moving forward is. An area where I think we can continue to build and grow in our organization is around student leadership. In in growing student leadership capacity. If you would allow me to kind of build out that transition piece. Looking at how to prioritize student voice, the development of student leadership and and how we might. Continue to or more effectively incorporate student voice in board matters. And we see if that is an entry point that we are comfortable with as a group. And then we could have additional discussion on what might that look like going forward. So if if that's amenable to the group, I would. I do intend very specifically to to privilege student voice in that entry transition plan. And would look to build out a way to help formalize that for the board as well as a starting point at moving forward. For your consideration.
Yeah, I mean, are you looking for a?
I saw head nods. I mean, I think that.
Right now?
Right, I don't, I I didn't, I didn't intend to to come out of this with you saying, yeah, let's do this. I think I I I knew that it's a conversation. That several members of the board wanted to have around a student rep and I I feel like providing you the. The big picture view of what's happening across the Commonwealth and what we might be able to do organizationally in terms of next steps would be a a good starting point.
Yeah, I think uh I think that's probably safe to say. Mr. Riffle?
Uh I mean, I I think from even from our just small discussion on this, I think. Keeping the student advisory committee separate from a student representative is kind of the goal, I think of in my my mind. I I don't want them to be some like combined thing, I think. Like I want students to be, if they want the obligation to be on the committee, I I want that. Their voices as well and if a student wants to be a student representative, that should be separate. They're welcome. I think student representatives should be welcome to the committee, like they can be a part of that, but I think I know some divisions have both of those things and they're separately and. To point to something you've you've spoken about with the cellphone policy, Hampton City Schools had their student representative on their dais when they talked about cellphones and they did weigh. The ability and there's four, three, three or four of those students in that group and. They talked about like the pros and cons of which their student body would understand the question and they, it was something that they did a presentation on themselves, so.
It was something that they what?
Students did a presentation of like what they know their students, their student body would like to do and themselves as leaders saying like, we actually need this kind of choice of. Removing cellphones and stuff. I I looked into this, I'd like try to like, be like, what are they doing around us? Like Newport News doesn't have one, um Hampton does. Virginia Beach had one at one point, um a lot of there's mixes about about that.
Were the students presenting something opposite from what the other board members ultimately did?
They were in agreement of their colleagues, like the point of like the students were like, they were asked like how would students feel about this and generally they. Students, they're not like the idea that the cellphones be going away, but they saw the purpose, the greater bigger picture, like which we we see here as a board member. Like that's the kind of the challenge of. Being a, being a student representative is like, yes, you're not the S C president, yes, you're not planning a prom, like you are thinking. Perspectives like governance body, right? Like, uh what does that mean? And so um that that's kind of how we would, I I would propose it. I think keeping them separate is important. I think allowing for that flexibility, but I. To see um the C E A can may also do some form of presentation, or sorry, not C E A, Student Representative Committee, um which is sort of. To do their, like some type of presentation about their high schools, like the end of like a end of year report, that's something we we kind of kind of floated to them and. Miss Doctor Roy is looking at me like, it's a lot of work, but it it is. I think our students like, they are, like students are hired, even that their schools do different activities. Like they're a part of different clubs, like um and they also volunteer at all of our other schools and things like that, so it's a way to kinda talk about like how our high schools are poor in terms around community and. Um I I just wanna showcase what they're up to. I think like it's not really a place where we we talk about as adults, but like for a student to tell us how what they're excited about. What they're not excited about or, you know, the challenges of the board is important, so.
And I think that part of my rationale for for talking about a the transition scenario is that the the student voices tour. From my perspective and I think from leadership perspective was incredibly impactful and I think we will continue to utilize. That type of a focus group with and for students. I I think, I think, Mr. Rival, there's a way for us to build out. How we incorporate students into our decision making at the building level and at the division level and then at the board level and I think if you give me. Some time to start to put some things in place, I I I think we can have additional conversations on. How that looks and feels from the board perspective and, you know, importantly, how we can incorporate students in those processes.
I'm in agreement. I just wanted to give that floater of, if we could try to, and even the thing you you did with the student voice tour is separate from these things. I think they're important in their own. Their own way and they're important that they kind of are their own lanes for students and the way they wanna participate with our school division, right? So. Thank you.
So I I guess I would consider this maybe the first of a series of conversations that that we'll have over a course of time and. And see what you come back with as you um formalize your transition plan.
Thank you. Sounds good. I appreciate the feedback.
Item six point zero seven, James Blair Middle School renaming consideration committee report. Challenge me like this. Got it.
Good afternoon, good evening again, Madam Chair, school board members and Dr. Kever. Thank you for the opportunity to share the next phase of the James Blair Middle School. Renaming Consideration Committee's work with you today. Our work these last few months has been governed by policy F F A school names, which allows the school board to designate a committee to make recommendations. On naming or renaming schools. In late February, the school board considered the possible structure of a renaming committee. Later in the month, the committee's role, composition and charge were. Charge were defined by the school board. Community members were invited to express their interest in serving on the committee and the committee convened, conducted research. And surveyed the community about potentially renaming the school. The committee's findings and recommendation were presented on April first. At that time, the board directed the committee to engage in the next phase of its work. Simply to allow for the opportunity to consider what alternate names may be presented if the school board were to pursue a name change. A survey was opened for nine days, allowing members of the community to submit alternate name ideas as well as their rationale for the suggested name. The committee convened on April sixteenth. Still guided by its shared agreements, the committee engaged in conversation around the survey results. The committee's original research and the criteria the committee previously discussed to guide a name evaluation process. Like the initial survey, five audiences were invited to submit alternate name suggestions. Current James Blair Middle School students, current James Blair Middle School staff, parents or guardians of current J B M S students. Current W J C C schools, parents or guardians who live in the Blair attendance zone and the general public. Each survey participant could submit up to three alternate name ideas. So for example, looking at this table, one hundred ninety seven students submitted at least one name suggestion. Some offered more, so in total, two hundred and thirty two entries were received from the one hundred ninety seven students. Across all audiences, three hundred ninety seven total respondents submitted five hundred twenty entries. After thorough evaluation and deliberation, the committee identified its five recommended alternate school names presented here in alphabetical order. Integrity Middle School, Kisskeak Middle School, Long Hill Middle School, Powhatan Creek Middle School. And Willow Oak Middle School. I'll share some additional rationale for each. Integrity is both inspirational and aspirational. A community member who suggested this name said, quote. A core part of J B M S education is an emphasis on building and strengthening student character. Integrity is a key trait we all want to encourage in our children and in ourselves. It is morality, goodness, honesty, respect. Reliability, responsibility and virtue. Integrity is knowing the difference between right and wrong and taking action based on that knowledge. Kisskeak is the name of a tribe of indigenous people, part of the larger Powhatan Confederacy, but lived in the eastern area of present day Williamsburg. Long Hill was submitted by four of the five audiences because of the adjacent Long Hill Road. With one individual noting the precedent of using a street name for a school name as with Laurel Lane. Powhatan Creek, in part as noted before, references the indigenous people native to eastern Virginia. But the addition of creek references the nearby geographic feature. And finally, Willow Oak described by a parent or guardian in the James Blair Attendance Zone. Said, quote, "The Willow Oak is a tree native to our area. Willow Oaks produce acorns. They start bearing fruit or the acorns." Once they reach fifteen years of age, which is the age at which most students graduate from middle school. The Willow Oaks acorns support a wide array of native songbirds and mammals and the tree is the host plant for many butterflies and moths. Willow Oaks are adaptable, tolerating both sun and shade. Symbolically, the Willow Oak is an ideal tree for our area and for our community's children. The committee's reflection, while students traditionally leave middle school a few years earlier, the committee was drawn to the symbolism described in the rationale. And imagery associated with a growing and maturing tree, growing and maturing tree supporting its community. I would like to thank again the committee for its time and thoughtful dedication to this process. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Are there any questions uh for Ms. Wall uh on the the report that was just given? Then I will let us um. I know we all probably all have some comments. I'll let anyone make a comment who wants. I think I'll start with um Mrs. Donner and then Dr. Cavazo says. They were our sort of school board reps on the committee, so Mrs. Donner?
Um so I just wanna thank the committee for all of their work. Uh there it, you know, there's been lots of different conversation with. Wanting to um uh get community input around this. And, you know, understanding from uh members of the community's perspective. The importance of a name and the importance of um how people. The inspiration that it can bring or or the harm that it can also cause. Um I think as the committee, as we've said in previous meetings, um although the community sentiment. Uh landed on a uh, you know, a fifth, a a little over the fifty percent majority of to not change the name. I think is the committee spent a lot of time doing research to understand. To James Blair, the person was uh and the connection to the broader Williamsburg community. And the complications of this particular individual that, you know, even in light of. What the community sentiment was and when you looked at the research, a lot of the community didn't quite know who he was and there wasn't a lot of. Time to educate the community beyond the um things that were emailed out or attached. Um I think the committee, having spent time really thinking about it, talking about it, landed on. It being uh an important opportunity for uh for the board to take up and consider a name change. And I think that was a committee that, you know, walked in just open to the facts and kind of landed there. Uh so I think it's, you know, as a, as a board member and knowing the history of how that name. Came to be um and the the climate in the fifties and while that has changed. And our students and our community is very pl- proud to be spiders and be James Blair and I think we as a committee talked about a lot about. Um from at least the student's perspective and some community members of, right, they have created other positive memories around James Blair. Um beyond maybe what others had experienced in the past. I think it's still the that um. I think many things can be true. That can be true and you can also have a name that is. Causes harm. Um and the um the opportunity to kind of reverse. What a board did seventy years ago in picking that name gives us the opportunity as a board to. Consider righting that wrong. You know, and I just think about, it was at um one of our elementary schools this week or last week. And they have a a rock in front of the elementary school and it's painted. And one of the pictures when you write, walk right up to on the front, it's Dr. Martin Luther King and the quote. That is on that rock is um and the the part that precedes the quote is, you know, we must use time creatively. And the knowing that the time is always right to do what is right. And so I think as a board completely understand. Community sentiment and wanting the community to be on board. And I also think there's an opportunity when you're presented with the opportunity to do something right. And to correct the wrong, that is always the right time, you know, and also thinking about more things around Dr. King, just talking about like. Silence is just more destructive um and that usually change happens. From the small group, not from the majority. And so that's an opportunity for us to consider change. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Dr. Cavazos, do you have some thoughts?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's a imperative that um. The board to follow the, as Miss Donner would put it, the community sentiment and this community sentiment was. Majority of the of the opinion was to not rename the school. And I would say that those sentiments were unsolicited. There was no advertising. There was no broad paper. Uh discussion about it. Um people came to their computer and and they pushed a button and decided what they wanted to do, so. It was pure, good, raw data that was presented. And um I would, um there was some comments, the comments is, um who decides to make the name? The committee who was assigned to to look at this or the community who did the voting? And it was my opinion that the community had spoken and they are the ones who live with the name. And we asked them what they wanted and that's what they said. And so um I think the board should be. Um respectful of the community's opinion um and move forward. Uh the only other question I have is, you know, there's been some conversation about right and a wrong, but who's this, who makes decision that that's a wrong? The one that made last, when they made that decision to do that, that's what it was at the time. They didn't think it was right or wrong. They, it is what it is. And um I think it's a a bit um brave to say that we are here to to right or wrong. It was a decision that was made and made in good faith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Uh Ms. Chen, would you like to say anything or I can come back to you if you'd prefer?
Sure. Yeah, um well, I have thought and prayed a lot about this issue. And um I I'll just read, I sort of reflected earlier today. And I'll just read what I came up with. Um but before I do, I'll say that um. I am deeply thankful for the committee's engagement. I think when we as a board, you know. Um, I think when we, as a board, you know, pretty strong majority agreed that we wanted to have a committee explore this issue, um, the reasons in which we did, and those reasons still exist, and they're reasons that I still support. Um, I would say that hearing the names, hearing the additional information today, um, it is, it is very heartwarming. It is very encouraging, and, and, um, my hope, I guess, is that there will be more community interest in continuing conversations, um, and that this doesn't, this doesn't just end today. Um, so I wanted to thank the committee for engaging in this important work. Um, we certainly rely on the committee's recommendations to make informed decisions that help us serve our students. We also rely on input from our larger community, um, students, families, staff, administration. Um, and while we, as a school board, have policy that gives us the responsibility to determine a school's name, this decision is not ours alone, and certainly not a decision that we want to make without more support and consensus and understanding from everyone who is involved with and interested in and invested in student learning, achievement, and well-being. So with a focus on student opportunity and growth, us composing a committee to consider renaming James Blair and engaging community interest, that was an essential and necessary part of this process. And us questioning the status quo of a name is about ensuring that every student feels like they belong. So I hope that we can continue to build education around our rich local history, including all of the stories and all of the perspectives of those in our community and those who have often been historically marginalized, and we can build empathy. And lastly, I, I do deeply hope that there will be a growing interest, and particularly from students, staff, and families, um, in hearing these names today and considering, um, meaning behind these names, um, and just really understanding the issues, um, as to, to why this is, um, something that we all should care about.
Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm a bit conflicted. Uh, yeah. I understand the public's perspective on this issue. I understand the survey results, but I also understand the idea of, like, the topic we're talking about, I think, um, about that. And I've done some reading. I, I attended the College of the Mary, and then I took a class at the Mary called African-American Studies in America, or as we called it, it was like the Black Voice of America, was the class it was called. Um, and I reflected on the book we read and the quote that I heard, and I, it sits with me a lot when this topic, because it's, it really is relevant. Um, when all you've known is privilege, oppression, sorry, when all you've known is privilege, equity and equality start to feel like oppression. You start taking things away or discussing things that allow for a community to think about the topics in which those things happen. I think it's hard for us to determine how we get there, right? And the power is vested in this room, and I think about that and other topics. I think about, like, you're willing to listen to the public now, right? You listen, us as a board, right? But I think about other topics where we voted things down, like we voted collective bargaining down. We heard from our community, our own staff saying, let us do, trust us, right? You won't want to do that, but you wouldn't trust seventeen hundred people that took a survey, so. I just, it's confusing from what you want as public officials and like what you want from your community, what you want from your staff, what people in this room should do. Um, this is a topic that's not comparable. I understand that, but the emotions are the same. Like, saying trusting a certain group, not trusting another, one of them we pay, one of them we use our money to. Why don't we do this stuff? Why don't we take their money? And that, it, it's just a weird cycle that my public policy heart or brain can't understand to an extent. Um, but that's the nature of local government. I get that. Um, but I'm still in the idea that I think our community is a little bit in the wrong on this. Um, and I talk to many of my constituents who disagree, um, who email me, who call. Um, and my phone's slipping. I'm happy to keep doing it. It doesn't, I, I ask the question mostly when they, they tell me they don't want this, or they do. Like, tell me more. Tell me why. Like, is it personal? Is it just because you, you, someone at your club told you this, or? Um, but those are things I'm grappling with. I think it's a tough place to be. It's a tough place to be for someone in my generational standpoint, too. I think this is a topic that people, um, my parents and I talk about this, and I think it's been kind of pushed down a hill. It's kind of landing on young people to, like, kind of eventually take up these things eventually, like, whether it's climate change, or it's, you know, do we put solar panels on roofs, like, or do we get electric buses, or whatever it may be, like, these are topics that we have to decide. This is eventually our place where people my age will eventually be on this board and doing the jobs you do. Uh, and it's a privilege to be here, and I get that. It's just, it becomes a topic where I think my voice is smaller than you suggest, but it's actually a lot larger. A lot of our employees are, are new employees around my age. A lot of people have similar discussions, and I, I, they're my peers, so. Um, I get all the results. I understand that, and I'm just conflicted. I'm like, what? Our committee actually wants in these things? Are we listening to larger voices or smaller voices, or is this topic too big to grapple with? Or is it just because our students don't really care, or they do care, but, um, it's, it's a hard place to be as a board member? And so I'm, I'm really not my own understanding. That's why I was elected here and why I'm doing this. And so I think that I would suggest we change the name. I just kind of keep moving through, um, this topic. We've thought a lot of work in it. I also think that the longer you persist these type of conversations with kind of wishy-washy activities, I think it doesn't allow for it to be productive. It becomes something where you've kind of don't trust institutions, and you allow for things to kind of go on too long, or we're going to teach it a certain way, or whatever it may be. I, I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a hard spot with it, and I, I don't know. No, 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 actually, we haven't really talked since the last time we talked with any of the members, so. Um, I just, I've just been trying to do my own kind of thoughts about this, and, um, racist America is tough, and I think it's going to be something that will, in my generation, will deal with a lot more than you all will, so, thanks.
Mr. Riffle? Joe saying, do you want to add anything?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'm gonna disagree slightly with, uh, Dr. Cavazo. Um, he mentioned that it was the, um, community that makes the decision on the name change, and technically, that's not right. As, as Ms. Chen said, uh, our policy says it's, it's the school board that makes that decision. But clearly, we take the, the community's input. Um, and this board, um, a couple of months ago, recommended that we form a committee to look into the name change. Um, one of the issues that we asked that committee to do is get community input, and that community input came back and said, "Do not change the name." Um, and this isn't just an issue that happened in the nineteen fifties. This happened in two thousand seventeen, when the school reopened, and the community was asked what the name should be, and the, the, the community came back and said James Blair, and the board approved that. Um, we asked again this year, um, as to what the name should be. And again, this is us as a board that asked the community that, for their input. Um, and the community, again, came back and told us they want to keep James Blair. Uh, I just feel that if, if we want the community's input on issues, and, and, and we're not going to agree with the community on everything. I mean, that, that's, that's going to be a given. Uh, there's going to be a lot of things that we will disagree with the community, and we feel what is best, um, for the school system, and we will vote our conscience on that. Um, but in this decision, the, the vast community came back and said that keep the name as James Blair. There's a lot of history with James Blair. Um, and I, in my opinion, at, in this point, we should go with the, what the community has recommended to us and, and keep the, the name as it is and not change it.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mrs. Henley, do you want to add anything?
Yes, um, first of all, I do want to thank the committee. I, a month ago, I didn't realize that the people that were sitting in those chairs were some of the committee mi- members till the, kind of the end. And so personally, we didn't get a chance to meet them, but, um, I know that they had hard work. They had hard work, and they had a lot of homework, which they presented to us, and I just want them to know, if they're listening, nothing that they did was done in vain. This has been a very, um, good process. For me, I've had a lot of sleepless nights for a month, and I have been doing hard work, hard work, and I had to do my homework. Um, two things came up last month. Uh, Ms. Chen was talking when she said something about, what if I had on my other hat? And I think the community might not know that we do, all of us, wear different hats. I mean, all seven of us, I love our board. This is the most diverse board I've seen. Um, we have two educators that wear hats. We have a lawyer. We have corporate. We have government people. And, um, we all have different perspectives. We've all had different experiences, and yet we're called to make decisions. And another thing that was said, you know, uh, as Mr. Riffle talks a lot, I love when he says my day job. So for me, what, you know, I have a day job, too. Um, I am retired, but my day job um, does a lot with, you know, healing and restoration, racial healing, having courageous conversations about, um, these types of topics, and so just trying to juggle all that. Um, Ms. Donner brought up something very important, and the first time I heard this statement about two things could be true was about two years ago, Mr. Stone, who's the, um, theater teacher at Jamestown, got a grant to, um, get, uh, introduce students with disabilities to, you know, want to be in a theater or come enjoy a play. What are their barriers? What can you do? And so he, uh, had things there for them, like fidget toys, and, um, the lighting was changed, the, the, uh, sound was changed, and, and, and I happened to see this year and, and, and last year, starting to see children with, with special needs in the, in the plays, and it's just brought my heart joy. But when we went to see it that night, as regular viewing audience, his, they always have a, a director's message, and he was talking about for Mary Poppins, that was the movie. You can look at something and two things can be true, and it depends on the perspective. And even when we went on our, um, convention, we were, several of us were in a meeting where, you know, if I put a six in front of, between Ms. Donner and I, I see a six and she sees a nine. Both are true. Um, and I think that's what happened with, um, for me, when I looked at the survey results, I said yes. You know, James Blair was a prominent person for all the accolades that they had listed, and it was true that he's a slave owner. It was true that the majority said rename, and some said not to. It was true, lots of people knew a lot about Blair, and there were others who knew nothing. It was true that some said they cared, and others said they didn't. Um, it's, some say it's true, um, they heard the comment. Some believe it is our job to right the wrong, and some believe that it's not. So that's where we sit in some of these. Now, when I look at the AI thing for the first time, what, what is our job, responsibility? And so when we sit in these chairs as board members, it says, "We're guardians and stewards of public trust, that they put their interest in our local constituents and, and youth first. We adopt and update policies. We oversee the budget, and of course, we act on the re- recommendations of the superintendent, and we can hire or dismiss a superintendent." This whole process has really educated me on a lot of things. I've lived in this, in Williamsburg for thirty years, and I didn't know who James Blair was. I knew Blair. I've walked these halls before they did the constructions on the other sites. And so I, I felt it to be important to go to all of my colleagues, teachers, friends who have taught in Blair, or even went to school in Blair, and I learned a lot. I didn't know that Matthew Waley, there was a time Matthew Waley was for first, second, and third graders in Bruton Heights, was the school for the fourth, fifth, and sixth, and then we had junior high school, which was Blair, and for seventh and eighth, and then Lafayette nine twelve, when they came aboard. I didn't know that the junior high named Lafayette when Lafayette became its standing school there. That's why they decided the students wanted two Lafiettes. I did not know that. Um, a lot of my constituents don't, don't, uh, email me or text me, because they know that's not my thing. I want to talk to you. I want to find out what you know, what you don't know. Um, a lot of them, um, didn't know. They missed the, whenever the, um, survey went out. You know, some people don't have social media. They don't get a newspaper, so I had to go back and explain some things. And then I, because I was asking them, well, you know, you have this opinion. I'm asking you, why didn't you vote? And that's some of the things I heard. So two things are true. Some people knew that there was a survey, and some people did not. They talked more about Blair, and, and it's interesting when I hear people sometimes say James Blair, and then I hear people that say Blair. And a lot of my family members, and I'll say I've talked to about twenty of them, and one, my sister-in-law, was in the class of nineteen sixty-nine. Um, they talked about how, you know, after the, the integration, and, um, how the teachers just came together to help educate the students, and having students that we still have now, the haves and the have-nots, they were dealing with children with no indoor plumbing, and those that could, could have afforded to go to private school. But there was this sense of pride of working together to pull everybody together, and that seemed to have continued through. My brother-in-law had a, a picture, a yearbook thing for basketball team, and there was a white boy, and all the rest were black, and I was like, who's the white boy? And he's like, oh, you don't know who that is? I'm like, no, and that's Bruce Hornsby. He's the coolest guy on the planet, you know? Um, I didn't know, you know, that he was a musician, and his mother's who na- we've named our other school after. And so they were like, yeah, we would go to his house. He'd come to our, our house, and then when he comes home from traveling, you know, so there was this pride, this sense of pride. And so even when, um, we, so when the new s- school was going to be built in twenty eighteen, and we asked, the school division asked for the, the name change, and most of them wanted that. I think it was a lot of people that were just in that whole pride, and then we, we did have a, some issues with administration. We got that worked out, and then, of course, we got Ms. Haskins, um, who was a phenomenal, um, principal. You know, that school turned around, and you have to think this school is coming, when you have a new school, you have people coming from different school divisions or different school philosophies, and just trying to sync all that. So, yeah, we got into some problems with accreditation, and, um, but we, they pulled through, and they started making progress, and then, you know, the capital C hit, and then we still began to pull it through. Now, I understand and I empathize with the class of nineteen sixty-nine and, and, um, you know, Ms. Lass, I, I get it. I, I have gone to the village. They do awesome job trying to help with the history, the voices of uni- integration. Um, I sat in the audience. I sat where I saw a white gentleman ask, can I come up and sit with you all? Because he just didn't know those types of things were going on. We heard it also from a few students. And I believe they're, they're having a get-together as well, um, if not this month or next month, because they didn't come together for this reunion. Somehow there was a, and they would have, they would have come. And so those voices were very important, and I understand the trauma of integration. I mean, I've, I've, you know, Little Rock nine, and even in nineteen twenty-two, there's a James Blair Norfolk. And they, they went ahead and integrated two weeks after the law came, so there was a, uh, Norfolk seventeen. Those are the students that went in. So I understand that, and I, and I feel for that. And, um, some of my constituents were asking about the mural that I want to make clear to people that, that are listening, that mural is nowhere in this building right now. And, um, of course, I showed that to some family members, and of course, when you look at which they would have considered art, um, there were six different interpretations of the mural. And so I started thinking, my hope, as I heard that, you know, Ms. Chen said, my hope would be, you know, I wish we have a resident artist, Mr. Steve Prince, who, that's part of his, his, his day job, is bringing, uh, education and cultural awareness, and he does paintings and murals. And every school we go into, almost everyone, has some type of mural. And I said, wouldn't it be cool if the, the Blair students got with the, the class of nineteen sixty-nine? Because I know the class in sixteen, nineteen sixty-nine has been at Matthew Waley. I think it's time for them to come to, to Blair. And if they could think about what kind of mural would we like to see on these walls to bring you joy? I love going in operations. That's why I like getting in schools and things. When Mr. Snipes showed me the Wall of Fame, that had the first school all the way to the, to the last, well, there's a plaque there for a new school, and so just seeing the history for each of the schools. And I thought, wouldn't it be just amazing? And I had asked Ms. Lester, I don't know if it was Ms. Lass or, or another woman I sat with, and said, "I would love if, if," because they were saying, "I wish there were pictures of us." And I said, "Well, you know, I, I can't hang the pictures, but if you had pictures of cap and gowns, we could, we could put it," like, I even said, "Do you want it in this building, or do you want it in a new building?" But wouldn't that be just, just, uh, awesome to line their pictures up along that wall? Because these, what they went through for, for these children to be able to learn together. What they went through for, for these children to be able to learn together, to sit together, to eat together. To, when they go to sports, to lose together, to win together, you know, to cry together. Um. That's what we wanna honor. We wanna honor that class of nineteen sixty-nine that had to endure what they endured so that we could progress. And we are progressing in the city of Williamsburg. There's lots of wonderful things going on. I feel just more education needs to go on. I went to um, Matoka. And the kids are not hiding anything in history. I mean, I hit that button on James, um, George Mason. And I learned some stuff about George Mason that I didn't know. They, they are not hiding anything. They are telling true history. I was very embarrassed to go and sit in um, the AP, Ms. Chen and I sat in the AP African histories course that Ms. Param did. And I think I, we saw about seven presentations and I sat there and I knew nothing of that history. And I started thinking, who failed me? Was it the schools I went to? Was it my parents? Was it society? Was it, why did I not know these things? I was just dumbfounded. Why didn't I know? And, and so, you know, that's. That's where we are. There are some things we just don't know. And we need to be exposed and we need to um. Try to work through it. I, I, my board members all know that I love each and every one of them. They have, they bring such unique perspectives. I still believe in, you know, I said this before when we went through something tricky, united we stand and divided we fall. And sometimes I feel like we're bowling pins and somebody's gonna. Send a ball, ball down to split the, but I, I say we stand. We're gonna respect where each and every one of us stand. But we stand. And um, so that's my feeling on it.
Okay. Um. I think there's a lot that's, that's been said tonight. Um, I, I'm, I think I'm. Proud of our board for having had this conversation. I'm proud of us for having had the committee and taken this, this up. Um, and we have learned a lot. We've um, certainly grateful to the committee. Um, for their, for their work, their extra time. Um, I feel that um. As, as board members and as leaders, we do have to take in many, many different factors. We can't focus on one, one factor alone. Um, we have to keep first and foremost, the current students as our number one priority. Um, that's who we have an obligation to, current students, uh, fiscal responsibility. Um, in a, in an incredibly difficult budget year. Um. And as many people have pointed out, uh. It seems like the, the real heart of the issue is not the letters that are on, on the school, but some of the. Sentiments and some of the knowledge or lack of knowledge within the, within the school. And that's not to cast blame. It's just. Um, to say that. A more important effort might actually be, like Mrs. Hunley said, um. Embracing our local history within the walls of our school and honoring the class of sixty-nine. And telling that, their story and uh, making sure that's integrated into the life of, of the school. Um, and we do have to take in uh, to consideration the community feedback that's come sort of in two iterations. Against um, a renaming. And um. I feel that given the budget and even time constraints, we're, we're sort of on a little bit of an artificial timeline that it has to be right this second. Uh, and I don't know that that's the case. Um, so I would um. Based on. A lot of the comments that I've heard here tonight, I feel we're, we're essentially gonna decide if this moves forward as an action item. I have the sense that there are two people who would like to move forward as a action item for next, is that correct? Can I see a show of hands if you'd like this to move forward as an action item? Okay. So. That would mean that it's um, the will of the board not to move forward with this as an action item for next time. Um, we do appreciate the um. Appreciate the, the history and the name suggestions and the meaning behind the names. Um. And we, um, I, I think it's been good to have this conversation in a, in a respectful way. And I hope that we can continue, um. We can continue to further educate each other and our, our community on um. Our rich local history as been said many times before, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Cara. Got some policies if you'd like me to move towards those.
Yep, move to, I'm sorry.
There's perhaps a desire for recess?
Oh, oh, sure. We can take a three-minute recess.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't. All right, we are going to reconvene once again. And knock out a few policies and uh, hopefully we ought to hear pretty quickly. Item seven point zero one, um, revisions to policy regarding acceptable technology system use.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, we have, this policy this evening is actually a double-coded policy, one in the student section and one in the staff section. Uh, which is why there are two naming conventions there. Uh, this particular policy is brought forward for review on a, on an annual basis, if, if memory serves. This is the acceptable use policy. Uh, the language in our particular suggested revisions this year. Include references to digital literacy and arti- artificial intelligence. Uh, we've changed some words around to help with the readability. Uh, as we have. Considered some of the challenges we've experienced over the course of this year, we added specific. Information around virtual private networks or VPNs and/or security bypass violations. Uh, there's been language added in the policy around copyright, intellectual property and AI compliance. I think it's also important to note that we added a cross-reference to policy GA, which is our employee conduct policy. Happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Questions from the board? I think we can move on to the next one.
Yes, the next one is JFCC, which is student conduct on school buses. Uh, this particular uh, policy was last revised in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have. Brought forward a series of revisions based on uh, VSB up, VSBA, excuse me, updating the model policy. Um, we talked specifically about student behavior in school and at school activities related to school buses. And updated the cross-references. There is, there is not a practical change to how we would uh, work with students who are in violation of conduct on buses.
Okay.
And policy JM, physical restraint and seclusion. Uh, we are bringing this forward related to a corresponding change with the VSBA model policy. There are no content changes. Um, but per the VSBA update recently, cross-references were updated to include. Some additional policies. You'll note that at the bottom of the policy itself, lines fifty-one, fifty-five, and fifty-six.
Any questions on any of these from the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we will move on to um, personnel actions. Approval of personnel actions. Um, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Uh, Ms. Haller?
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
I'm good for now, but um. Uh, we are now moving on to board member comments. I know we just kinda made a lot of comments about a lot of things, but um, if uh.
I have comments.
Oh, okay, Mrs. Hunley. Um, how many shows did you go to this week?
I'm gonna have my comments.
Two weeks.
I'm not keeping y'all here to one, so. But um, the mock trial uh, between War Hill High School and Lafayette, that was new last year. It was just War Hill students had a defense team and a prosecution team. Well, they upped the ante this year. They had sketch artists and they had. Um, War Hill was the plaintiffs and uh, Lafayette were the defendants. And. It was amazing. We had a, a lawyer, a real judge there to help with it. And. We, I was on the jury and there was deliberations. And I'm just amazed, those kids, you wouldn't, you would have thought they were real. Lawyers and stuff. They were great actors. And so um, they wanna have a competition now like Paul Jamestown High End. And I could see. Um, that happening. Uh, happy teacher appreciation to all teachers. Um, I hope that you're spoiled rotten with all kinds of things that are not ship approved this week.
We do value the ship partnership.
We do, but there's a time where you can cheat. We're gonna cheat like on a diet. And then uh, again, thank you to the uh, the names that came forward. I mean, we're growing as a division and some of those names are just awesome names. Now I, I kinda understand why in New York or California, they're, I never understood why a school was named after a number. Um, that was something I also learned within this, this month. And, and while we're speaking of Blair, I know I. We had some discussion, but I would love, I know I said this last year, um, anything we can do to help with their lighting and sound for mic. Mic systems for the plays would be great, greatly appreciated. And just to remind everybody, we still have one play that. Will be coming up the end of the month, lots of sporting events before we get to graduation. And I just wanna remind everybody to stay focused and finish strong. Yeah, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mr. Hoseng.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, first I wanna congratulate Dr. Kever uh, for his selection for the superintendent. Um, the acting, I guess, will come off in a couple weeks. And with that will be the training wheels also. So uh, we'll get through the test starting on uh, June first. So, uh, I also wanna thank the teachers, um, for Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh, my father was a high, junior high and high school teacher, mostly high school teacher. So I, I understand. The struggles that teachers go through and, and all the work that they put in. Um, and. When my friends and I get together, uh, my high school friends and everything, we always talk about our high school teachers. Um, and, and the impression that they made on us. And even some elementary school and, and, and junior high teachers. And watching Ms. Hunley interact with her students, former students, I should say, um, all the time. I mean, you can just tell how much the teachers impact the students. And so I just, I just wanna thank all of you for all that you do. Just to give everyone the heads up, if you haven't been thinking about this, Mother's Day is Sunday. So happy Mother's Day to um, all the mothers in, in our school division. Um, and I just wanna give a shout out to the two uh, lacrosse club sports um, teams. Um, I went to two games the past, since our last meeting, um, when Jamestown played, when Lafayette uh, played. And I can tell you, I am extremely impressed at the quality of the, of the lacrosse that the club sports play. When you initially think of a club sport, you think of sort of like a, a. Like a minor league, like half, not run properly, not run well. These games were run extremely well. The, the teams were very. Competitive. They were very well coached. They were very well disciplined. Um, and um, I can. Wholeheartedly say that at least the two teams that I saw, and I know that there was. In the Lafayette team, there's some War Hill players that were on the Lafayette uh, team also. I can easily say that. These teams are ready for a high school sport. Um, so I'm hoping that next year that, um, when we do our budget, that we can include lacrosse because um. These teams will definitely make Jame City County Williamsburg proud. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoseng. Mr. Riffle?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I also want to congratulate Dr. Kever. Um, I think you've been an awesome acting superintendent. I actually have been fairly impressed, well, not impressed, I think I've got to know you as a different person, not just as the policy guy or board. I need to be very funny and very articulate and students seem like you, educators seem like you. And so. It was definitely a, a very large selling point of how you, you became the new superintendent. So. Um, I also learned that your middle name is Firing, which is very fun. Um, and I'm excited to see you.
I need to correct you. It's actually Fearing. No pronounced, the, the spelled F-I-R-I. It's a Norwegian family name.
I was like, no way, it's firing. And everyone else was like, oh, what are you talking, anyways, all right. Thank you, Dr. Kever. Um, well, I'm excited because you are funny and you are gonna do a good job and. And I, I think it's awesome that you can, you're leaning into this a lot. And I, I'm proud to call you the next superintendent. And I, I'm hoping my. You know, people in the division can see that you've done a lot. And if you're gonna make some waves and. Um, you're not really excited for the status quo, you're looking to change some stuff and make a difference. So, so thank you. Um, I'm thankful to Jame City County um, for giving us that extra million bucks. But I also. Would like to challenge them and their understanding of the joint contract. Um, we've received a couple of cool letters that, you know, they said they would stop sending, but they keep doing it. So. I think it's important that we kind of stop talking about stuff. We, we talked about renaming ourselves today. And. I think there is a looming threat to that contract when it comes to the naming of our school division. Uh, I think that's something that is. It's gonna upset pub, the public. I think it's a waste of money. Um, if people told us that this is a waste of money, I can't imagine what the tune of two or eight. Two point eight million dollars without doing that would do. So I'm challenging my Jame City County colleagues to move on. Um, because that's. So I'm challenging my James City County colleagues to move on, um, because that is, it's ignorant to an extent. I, I, I just can't understand why you care in which, where you're alphabetically placed and how the state gives you funding. Care about the funding formula, care about the things that matter, academics and personnel, not where you got placed and where the state. You don't get more funding by having James City County in the beginning, so, um, I'm, it's just upsetting to read. Um, it's something that like doesn't really belong in this conversation when it comes to students and what they deserve, so. Um, I think that's just, it's kind of old people thought and I'm happy to say that, so. And then, uh, I'm just excited because this, this is, this is a pretty cool episode. I mean, like when I tell, ask people, I say, what does the school board even do? I'm like, this is everything the school board does. And you could, you can do it every, you can do it all. And that's something I am so impressed by, the people in this room. And I think Ms. Hunley said it great. I think we all come with different perspectives. Um, we share different parts of our community. Um, and this is a great episode to look into and to just see what we're up to. I mean, even just the part alone about, um, our strategic plan or like what we've done in that past year and so how the staff feedback is feeded back into our division, um, it's just, it's awesome, so. So thank you all in this room for the work you do. Thanks to our teachers, especially this week. You know, I, I won't say what Ms. Hunley did, but I hope you get celebrated and you do what you're supposed to and you're excited for the, the homestretch because, um, we're excited for June seventh. And I know plenty of people are excited for spring break, for summer, summer break and type of work, so, so thank you. Oh, I went to the exceptional games as well. That was amazing. It was awesome to, you know, run on the track, do the limbo, whatever, you know, what we're doing.
Dance.
Yeah, and dance terribly, um, but it's awesome. And I'm just so glad we have something like that in our division. Um, it's something where I think our students really do lead that day. They really kind of take the charge. Jamestown is, and other schools that come and volunteer, um, they, they really into what our students deserve and, and experiences they should have, so. It's just even more of a reason for, for us to have that conversation early about how our students can participate with us. But they are participating in such large ways and they're making an impact on their own colleagues and how they experience education. So, so, so thanks to those teachers and staff and everyone who made that day happen because it's not easy to move buses and that ramp and get them on the hot sun and, and carry flags and all that stuff too, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen, do you have any concluding comments?
Mrs. Ortega and I enjoyed watching the two of you dance. We watched, we would not participate.
We knew better than to.
No one took picture of me, so I'm good.
But we had a lot of fun and the exceptional games were truly exceptional. It cannot have been a more exceptional day, um, so really glad, um, we got to do that and looking forward to, you know, next year and years to come. I just wanted to highlight a few things. Um, I, I enjoyed the, the musicals that have been put on and I'm looking forward to now attending many of the end of year, um, band concerts, one of which last night was James Blair Middle School's last band concert. So, you know, just wrapping up the year and seeing kids move on as they level up or even graduate and participate in their last band concert. I hear Mr. Hargis's final band concert and all of the seniors at Lafayette, that will be Thursday. So that will be, um, a very meaningful one, right? Uh, so all of that is happening and, um, also just wanted to appreciate, uh, send out a shout out to, uh, Ms. Param who invited us to, um, uh, participate in, and watch and observe the AP American, African American Studies, uh, final projects. I, I learned so much, um, and I, I walked away, um, very impressed by the students. And I hear that there are double, more than double the amount of students at Jamestown next year who enrolled. So they're probably gonna at least have to have two classes with the number of students enrolled in that course. So hopefully one day that's something we can offer at all of our high schools. Cause again, I think if the opportunity is there, students are interested. So again, teacher, that, shout out for teacher appreciation week. Thank you to all the teachers out there as well as, um, you know, mental health awareness this month. And, um, it's also Asian American Pacific Islander Month, so small but mighty.
Thank you, Ms. Chen, Dr. Kavazos.
Yes, um, I would like to offer my sincere and deep gratitude to all the great teachers of this division. And I want to welcome a new great superintendent. And I will say that this is absolutely a great division that will be made even greater with the addition of lacrosse. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Dr. Kavazos.
I don't know, Dr. Kavazos, you might need to get them to pass the plate to help fix Cooley Field because it's been taking out the CIP by the county, so if all the, all the lacrosse high schools sit in the county, but they don't want to fund the field, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
What if we could do it?
Alright.
Have the punch.
Just saying. I, he hit, you saw you hit me. That's a, that's a lawsuit. He's always hitting me. I just wanted it for the record, that was on camera.
Bend the plane.
Yeah, I'm trying. So, um, along the lines of appreciation, I love Matthew Whaley. It's going on beyond just teacher appreciation this week. And so it's, it's for the next two weeks. It's with teachers and staff, so there's thank an admin. Thank your bus drivers on next Monday. It's thank, thank stock the fridge, thank the custodians and cafeteria staff. There's a lemonade stand, a luncheon, um, having, I don't know what you're doing May ninth, but they're looking for lunch duty to help the TAs, Mrs. Hunley.
What day of the week is that?
I think it's Friday or some, this Friday. Anyway, I think it's just all these.
I'll be there.
It's just, there are so many, our teachers are phenomenal and they have such a strong support behind them. And so just happy that we are acknowledging all of those. I also got to go to the strawberry festival. Uh, Mrs. Hunley showed up there as well and it was the forty-sixth annual and it was so much fun and you see all of the kids running around and it's so fun when they see their friends. And particularly the, the kindergartners are so proud of how far they've come and they just, all the hugs that they get and the excitement when they see their friends, so. Big shout out to the PTA at Matthew Whaley that helps to sponsor that, um, and just continuing the support from the community. And I'll say Level Up was amazing. I got really, I got some firsthand feedback about how important that was. And how, how enjoyable and it helped to just some, calm some of those fears of walking into a new building. So I think that was really great. And I'm excited for the Impact Awards tomorrow. We get to honor our teachers of the year as well as our support staff. And congratulations. It's like it's been a long journey. We've gotten to congratulate you a little bit earlier, so, but congratulations. We're excited. And as, as Ms. Ortega said, it was a nationwide search. It was not a foregone conclusion. It was, there was fantastic candidates and you rose to the top every time, so thank you.
Um, well, I always get to go last and so I don't want to reiterate everything that six other people have said. But of course, happy teacher appreciation week and really every day. I hope, um, teachers feel appreciation because they are the bedrock of our community and, um, the bedrock of our future really, because everything they do is investing in, in the next generation. We know it's hard work. It's, um, often thankless. There are many things teachers do day in and day out that people don't even see. There's a lot that you can see, but a lot more that you don't see. And so we just want to, um, acknowledge that and, um, express deep appreciation for all of our dedicated teachers. I got to go to, yes, I was at the exceptional games, which is truly exceptional. If you ever get a chance to stop by or participate or volunteer, it's, it's very, very rewarding. I feel somewhat useless because I, I know there are so many people that work hard to put that on and run it and we kind of just visit, um, but, but it is extremely, um, wonderful. And, and it runs so smoothly and it, it, the kids have so much fun. And there's so many, um, just different faces and different smiles and, and you just know that they are having a wonderful time and feeling appreciated and love get, getting their medals at the end. So, um, thank you to everyone who conceptualized that. Thank you to everyone who, um, put in all kinds of work to make it happen and, um, look forward to it again next year. I got to see the Descendants at Toino Middle School because my daughter, um, loves the Descendants and she wore the outfit. And she, we went there and she was very excited about the, for months. And then we ended up having to leave a little early because she started feeling sick, um, so she was very upset. But if anyone saw us leave, that's what it was. It was, um, the, the show was, um, fantastic. And for, I keep reminding myself, it was middle school too, it's not even high school. So that was really fun. And then Little Mermaid was phenomenal. It's the one, um, one I got to make it to. And, um, all, the shows are always phenomenal, but Little Mermaid was, the, the, the vocal talent is shocking. You're, you think it's Broadway, but, um, so that was very fun. I want to say, uh, thank you to, to both of our funding partners. We have been, we did have a, a tremendous ask this year, uh, and we've been working with them, um, for several months now. And so we do thank the city for, for fully funding the request. And we thank, um, the county for recognizing, um, the need that we were still left with at the end and being willing to step up and figure out a way to, uh, bridge that gap for us. And, um, we're very appreciative. Obviously, congratulations, Dr. Keever. Um, this was, it's quite the process. And, uh, it's definitely earned. Um, I would say not only was it not a foregone conclusion, but, um, going into it, I, I think the, the board had a sense that want new, new, fresh, uh, you know, fresh face, fresh blood, fresh ideas. And, um, what we found in Dr. Keever was some, a lot of fresh ideas and fresh ways of doing things. And so, um, we're very excited for what you're going to be able to do now that the, the news is out and you can really be, um, released to go forth and do wonderful things. Not only do you have, uh, a different way of doing things and fresh ideas and, and, and goals that you were able to articulate, but you have the knowledge of the division as it functions now and you have relationships that are critical. So you can, um, hit the ground running a lot faster than someone coming in from the outside. And yet I think we'll see some very positive, um, development, so I'm excited. And I, I want to thank, um, my colleagues, my fellow board members because that was, that was quite the undertaking. Um, that was not, not necessarily easy. None of us had done it before. We were, we're all relatively new. But this process was, went extremely smoothly and we, we all put in a lot of time and a lot of thought. I know everyone was really wanting to make the right decision and really, it weighed heavily on us. And so, um, thank you for being easy, you know, so easy to work with. And we didn't always agree, but we got there and, and, um, so thank you all for, for all the effort that that took and all the extra meetings. Is that, oh, oh, of course, and Ms. Haller. I actually have it written down. I was gonna get there.
She was here, dog.
Yes, Ms. Haller gave up a few Saturdays and extra hours and kept us on track and was always one step ahead of us, thinking of all the little details that we were gonna need, um, and staying in touch with our, um, our consultants. So thank you for everything that you did because we, we couldn't have accomplished that goal without you, so thank you. Yes, and we're excited for, um, Impact Awards. Mrs. Don already mentioned it, so I won't say much. But, um, that's a, that's always one of the events that I look forward to at the end of the year to, um, honor our teachers of the year and our support staff. And, um, so grateful we get to do it at the beautiful museum in CW. And so that should be a really, a really fun night. And I think that's all I have for now. Upcoming, upcoming events, we just mentioned Impact Awards. It's tomorrow, five, seven, twenty-five at five thirty PM in the Henedge Auditorium of the Art Museum for Colonial Williamsburg. Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on May fourteenth, um, at three thirty PM in room three hundred of the annex. Special Education Advisory Committee also on, uh, five fourteen at five PM in room one oh eight of the school board and central office. And Policy Committee will meet on five sixteen, nine forty-five AM in room two oh three of the school board office. Our upcoming meetings, we have our, um, next regular meeting on May twentieth. Closed session will begin at five in room three hundred of the annex. Regular meeting will start at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And then our, um, work session in June will be, uh, June third. Closed session begins at four PM in room three hundred, followed by work session and action items, also, uh, starting at four thirty PM, also in room three hundred of the annex. So with that, our agenda items are set for the next meeting. We are adjourned.